Okay, this February 21st, 2018, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. And Dan, I believe you have an addition to it, and then Kenny.
Yes, thank you, Tom. So I think just given recent events and the decision to close our modulators at Moheramet for safety concerns, I felt like it was important that the board have a conversation about using the high school as a polling place. So I'd like to, and obviously it's very time-sensitive with March being the next election. So I'd like to add that to the agenda. So I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Moved by Dan, is there a second on that? Second by Kenny? Discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Is it all right if I add that discussion? Let's see. Let's see. Do you care if it's like after the finals?
I don't have a preference. I don't have a preference on where.
Okay. Okay, Kenny?
And I would suggest there's some special announcements concerning some sport performances and some great successes, and I would like to add that before public comments, sort of a special announcements.
Okay.
Part of the meeting.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second for that? Second by Denise? Discussion on that? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. So we have some special news about sports events, and so I don't know who wants to get started on that.
I'd like to publicly congratulate Noah Strout for his wrestling of achievement. Noah won the state championship, Division III state championship in the 145-pound class. Great accomplishment for Noah, and wanted to publicly congratulate him. He will be attending the meet of champions next weekend, so. Also like to congratulate Olivia Colaruso for qualifying for the meet of champions as well in Alpine skiing in the Giant's Lawn. So I wanted to congratulate her too.
Are there other announcements for sports? Well, congratulations to both of those individuals. Okay, public comment? Maria?
Hi, I'm Maria Barth, and I'm from Lee. And I'm here to express my disappointment regarding your recent vote on football. As many of you know, I'm not a big sports person, and I hate to be right behind the awards, but I don't follow sports. I haven't participated, even though I tried valiantly to learn some baseball lingo sitting next to Al. I was pretty good, right?
You were.
But, on the other hand, I respect and I acknowledge science. Unfortunately, this country does not. We ignore climate science. We pollute our waters, air, and soil with carcinogenic chemicals. We spend billions of dollars on prescription medical drugs and modern medicine while ignoring scientifically-supported preventive medicine. You ignored the research regarding head trauma in football. You ignored science. I recently read a quote by Krista McCovey, the New Hampshire astronaut, which I've taken to heart. She said, "I touch the future. I teach." And as, in my opinion, it is your job as leader of an educational institution to touch the future. And to respect and acknowledge science and to vote accordingly. The future depends on our actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Whoops, I hit something.
Next, Keith?
Hi, I'm Keith O'Brien. I'm a parent of two children at Mast Way, one of whom will be in the middle school next year. I'm here to speak tonight about the cellphone policy review. I'd like to begin by reiterating something I said to the board in my comments last fall. I appreciate the service and the time and effort of each and every one of you. I know that even when we disagree, that you have the best interests of our children at heart, just like we do, and I appreciate you for that. And I don't envy the decisions you make on a regular basis. Please don't misconstrue my passion on this issue for anything other than just that, which is passion on this issue. I think the core of the cellphone discussion comes down to two questions. Two questions that the board needs the answer, two questions that the district needs the answer. The first question is, what is the benefit of our current cellphone policy? A policy that allows fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to Snapchat their friends all day, to text their friends all day, to use their phones in class as a calculator, only they're not using it as a calculator, they're surfing the web and going to inappropriate websites. This has happened, the administration is aware of it. What is the benefit of that policy? And how does that benefit outweigh the clear, known, and documented risks? I've asked that question. I haven't been able to get an answer. We need to be able to answer that question as a district. Question number two is, do our children need phones in the classroom in order to achieve academic success? And do our schools need phones in the classroom in order to have academic rigor? The research suggests clearly no. In fact, it's a detriment to academic rigor and a detriment to academic success. But if our position as a district is that we do need phones in the class to teach, they are an enrichment tool, well then we've made them a part of the curriculum. We would never give the math textbook to some kids but not others, the required English reading to some kids but not others. And yet we do this on a regular basis with phones in the class. Why? Why do we create those divisions for our children? Why do we make some feel inadequate because they don't have an iPhone 7 or no phone at all? Why? Tonight is family reading night at Mast Way, where my kids should be where I wish I was. I'm not there. I'm here instead because this is extremely important. We need to answer those questions. And I hope that the board does right by our kids and by the research, by making the right decision and banning these phones from bell to bell at our middle school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Good evening, everyone. UC Terrell. I have children in second and fourth grade at Moheramet. Like Keith, I'm here about the cellphone policy. I obviously don't have kids yet in the middle school, so I can't speak to the current culture or the effects of the current policies. I do want to tell you a personal story about my fourth grader and how our experiences are consistent with the peer-reviewed research about the cognitive cost of the mere presence of cellphones, even if they're turned off. The fact is, my fourth grader does not do well with temptation around electronics. Like many families, we let our children play on the iPads on weekends. My son would wake up early in the morning, five in the morning, three in the morning, once he woke up at one in the morning. And he would play until we woke up and realized that it was about to be a very challenging day. We quickly realized that we needed to put a passcode on all of our devices, and I share this not because we, as parents, realized that we needed to set limits, but because my son also realized that limits on electronics helped him focus on what is healthy for him. Earlier this year, he saw our babysitter input the codes, and he came to me later and asked me to change the code so that he didn't have to be tempted, so he didn't have to try to operate with 10% of his brain as a siren song to the other 90%, and to have that debate going on within him about the choices he should make. In a little over six months, amazingly, my fourth grader will enter middle school. And from my personal observations and from research on this age, I know that his brain won't develop by that point to be able to avoid distraction from cellphones, even if online pornography and bullying don't show up in fifth grade. Can't imagine it, my sweet boy. Simply having smartphones around him would distract him. I think of it as trying to study with constant loud noise in the background, or playing sports with one hand tied behind your back. You might get used to it, but the quality would be lower and the experience less satisfied, so why would you choose this? Our family experience is consistent with research that shows that consistent, persistent presence of cellphones comes at a cognitive cost. Experimental results supported the brain drain theory that the mere presence of one's own smartphone occupies this limited-capacity cognitive capabilities, and so undercuts the cognitive performance in other ways. And so it shows that even when people are successful at maintaining sustained attention, like avoiding the temptation to check their phones, the mere presence of these phones reduces that available cognitive capacity. Our family is anti-cellphone and anti-technology. My husband and I have cellphones, we use them regularly, we let our kids play online with their friends. I would like to see technology integrated even more meaningfully across our curriculum. But when I combine my children's earlier experiences with these increasing amounts of credible research that point out the correlations with depression, anxiety, as well as reduced cognitive capacity, I want to know why our district continues to feel that the presence of cellphones is more beneficial than their absence in the middle school. Middle school is hard enough, and I ask the board and administrators to ban cellphones during the day in the middle school so that our children have a chance to bring their full and distracted selves. Thank you.
Thank you, UC.
Amy Sterndale, Durham. I have a fifth grader in the middle school and a second grader in Mast Way. I really wish I'd gone first because my friends and colleagues here are just much more thoughtful in their comments, but I am also here to speak about the cellphone policy review. I want to say first, as Keith said, thank you for all of the work that you put in. I don't envy you the conversations, the decisions that you have to make. We moved here specifically for the quality of this school district, and I can appreciate the challenge when you have a new technology come in to, or a new conversation like late start times, how you have to adjust as a school board to figure out now what is right for us now to maintain that very high quality that we have and that we all came here for. So I appreciate those decisions you've got to make. I want to point back to last year and that process that you all went through with, many of you went through, with the late start times. I felt like that ultimately, as a participant, as a parent, was a very thoughtful, diligent process, where we really allowed data to come to the forefront. We allowed people like Aaron Haley Sharp to come and present, to explain, to give us that time as a school board, as a school district, as a community, to get our heads around, what is the data really saying? What is the national recommendations? What are we learning now from those front-runner, early adopter school districts about how we can be the best and create the best environments for our schools? So I just want to say, I hope that our process, when we go through looking at cellphones, is similar, that we look at the data, that we not look at anecdotal evidence. UC's story is fantastic, and there are others like it, I'm sure, but I also want to make sure that we ground this in data, and whatever you decide, you can ground your decisions in that data. Lastly, I really do hope that schools can maintain themselves as a sanctuary for our students in this very complicated world that we are living in, that we can make sure that it is an equitable, fair, safe environment that they can live in during the day, where they can focus on their studies, they can focus on learning to be social, they can look at each other in the eye and learn how to do these things and not how to do these things. As parents, we'll take care of the after-hours, but I'd like to reiterate, I really hope that bell-to-bell, that we can get cellphones out of our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
I'm speaking for two, but not because I'm pregnant. Clearly. I'll just say that. My husband can't be here. Ian Fleischer, Durham, New Hampshire. He's homesick, and he was homesick from school today. So he wrote notes, so I'm going to read his notes. I'll speak for him, and then I'll speak for myself. Ian writes, "I'm a sixth-grade math teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. Our school policy is that there are no cellphones or devices allowed during the school day or on school grounds. Child has to be out of the building and off of the front steps before they may take their phones out of their bags." So children bring phones to school, but once they get to the school steps, they have to go in their bags. From my perspective as a teacher, the policy is clean, simple, and unambiguous. Children easily understand it, and it's not hard to manage. In fact, I think it makes teaching and learning easier, as we, the teachers and children, don't have to manage phone usage, the distractions, nor the distractions and behaviors that often go along with it. Similar to Oyster River Middle School, we in Portsmouth Middle School are organized by teams, and our teams have regular meetings with families before, during, and after school. I've participated in about 70 meetings with parents and caregivers this year, in addition to the official parent-teacher conferences. And we use the time to discuss children's learning, their academic and social needs, their strengths, their goals, as well as their behavior in classroom activities. Not one of these meetings that I've had with parents this year has ever involved anything to do with phone usage or issues resulting from social media. We spend our time talking about their children and their learning. I've lunch duty about once a month for a week at a time. Matt, every day for a week in a middle school. That's my little note on that. I've lunch duty about once a month for a week at a time, and during that time, I observe children talking, playing, socializing, reading, and more. There are lots of ways to be in our lunchroom and to be at recess. For children who have social anxiety, and there are some, and who might need or use a phone as a barrier, they don't have their phone, but they do have the library, and many children go to the library. I have to say, lunch duty isn't easy, as there is a lot of action and an energetic buzz in our cafeteria, but that's as it should be with 160 12-year-olds converging in one space. In my experience teaching in a phone-free school, I can't imagine anything that would be lost if Oyster River Middle School implemented a phone-free school day policy. So that's from Ian. And then just a quick note, words from me, Kathy Collins, Durham. We have two children, one in middle school and one in the high school. I want to begin, not on the phone topic, but just to give thanks to Mast Way and Moheramet for hosting and participating in Oyster River Community Reads workshop sessions that Shauna Coppola and I led, talking about race in elementary school classrooms. Kate Zimmer and Christina Delcino hosted in their classrooms, and we had three sessions that were attended and thoughtfully participated in by teachers at both schools, so I just want to say that, and that was great. So now, a quick perspective on the phone. Before my kids went to the middle school, I was freaked out about them having access to phones, but more about access to other kids' phones, because of course, when they're in elementary school, you think, oh, my kids will never, and they do, and they did. Both of our kids have had their phones taken away for different reasons. They've never been primary actors in any kind of transgression with their phone, but they've been tertiary, they're around it. And so we, as parents, thought this is a phone break opportunity. My kids appreciated the phone break. But I work as a literacy consultant, and I work in schools all over the world, all over the country, and I, probably the last, well, since the fall when this phone conversation started, I've been asking schools, I work, what is your middle school policy? And not one school allows free devices, and these are some of the most high-performing schools in the world. One argument I often hear, though, from educators in support of phones and devices is, well, they're not going away. Come on, they're not going away. That might be true, but there's a lot of things that aren't going away, but we're not inviting them into our schools. That might be a compelling reason, but the rationale, well, we need, why get rid of phones, they're not going away, seems like resignation. It seems like a passive reason to allow phones. And I would think teaching and learning should be active, and we should be leaning in on why we're doing things and creating policies. Another reason is that people always say, well, we need to get kids ready. We need to let them, they're going to be using them down the road. But these kids are digital natives, they've been playing on iPads out of school, their five-year-olds are fixing our internet, our cable in our homes. The fetish for readiness has created kindergartners that don't have recess or playtime, because kindergarten, we're getting them ready for first grade; middle school, we're getting them ready for high school; high school, we're getting them ready for college. We're never letting them be who they are. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you so much for all your efforts on this.
Thank you, Kathy. Just trying to remind you, if you could hold it to three minutes.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay.
My name is Jen Pribble, and I have, my husband and I have a daughter in the high school, and we also have a third grader at Moheramet Elementary School. And I'm here to also talk about the cellphone policy review. I agree and support everything that's already been said, but I just wanted to add another point. I think like Kathy said, she's heard reasons for having cellphones, and there's one other reason that I've heard people say, well, our teachers really rely on having our students be able to access the internet from their devices. I think the really great thing about a public education is that it should be free and equal to all students. And when we rely on families to have, put pressure on those families to have devices in the classroom, then it no longer becomes free, and it's no longer equal. So beyond all the social pressure, you're then putting pressure on families who may not have the resources to try to allocate those resources or to have their students not have the same access. We were later to the game providing a phone for our daughter in middle school because she came home saying, I need one. Everybody's using their phone to access information. Now, I've been around long enough to know that everybody does this is not always a legitimate clause when your middle schooler is telling you that. But there is pressure there. And I think that when you're looking at the policies, I think we really need to make sure that that argument isn't part of it, because that's a budget question about whether or not we're financing enough technology for the classrooms. So I solidly support a ban. My daughter would be mortified, but she is often without her cellphone, and she never has a problem calling me or my husband on any given day from the school. So she does not need a cellphone during the school day, and neither do middle schoolers, especially not middle schoolers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Pelagi. I have three students at Moheramet, a third grader and twins in the first grade. I've also spent the last 14 years of my professional career in IT, selling advanced storage equipment, cybersecurity solutions, networking solutions, et cetera. So I have a little bit of experience in this place. In researching, talking about tonight, I looked at a few things on our websites. First, our motto, "Working Together to Engage Every Learner." And then the second paragraph of the philosophy of our school district, where staff members will strive to aid in each student's intellectual, physical, moral, emotional, aesthetic, and social growth, so that he or she may become a useful and responsible member of home, community, society, while leading a personally rewarding life. And those, I felt, hit really, really strong to the topic at hand. From my perspective, I'm going to operate under the assumption that there's going to be a change here at some point regarding the policy. With that, I look at that as an opportunity. There is absolutely a place for education in the classroom, but those should be managed. And those should be managed as a connected device by the school district or by the school itself. There's an opportunity here to define the difference between a personal device and a managed device. I've done a lot of research on our technology device codes, Portsmouth, the cooperative middle school for SAU 16, Boston Public School districts, and for the most part, everything was said where devices would be leveraged, they're to be leveraged to enhance education. But that personal connected devices do not have a place in that space. So I'd like to just offer a few considerations when developing what this policy looked like, that, one, we identify the difference between a managed device, again, managed by faculty and staff, and a personal connected device, of which is not just a cellphone. I'm wearing a watch that happens to be connected, could be connected to a Verizon network, could be connected to my phone via Bluetooth. You're going to have glasses in the classroom soon that could be connected. You may have earbuds that look like earrings that could be connected. There's a number of different ways in which we can connect today, and building a policy that will grow with that capability is going to be incredibly important. But again, it comes back to the difference between a school-managed device and a personal-managed device. So considerations when creating these policies, first and foremost, general guidelines for use, acceptable use policies, what's acceptable, what's not, and when. Consequences for disruption and misuse needs to be identified. A school liability statement needs to be made clear. And finally, a user agreement that needs to set terms between the school or the school district with both parents and students. I think these four areas are critical when looking at building a policy. And lastly, I wanted to note one thing that I found interesting. Boston Public Schools has one policy, K through 12. Not one for every school, not one for elementary versus middle, middle versus high school. It's one policy. They have their managed devices, and they have a policy around personal devices. I think there's a lot that we can learn from those policies, and I urge you to consider those four guidelines when moving forward with your policy development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we could have one more. Okay, finish with you, John. Coming up.
Morning, or morning, evening. So I'm John Bromley. I'm a resident of Durham. I have two kids, one at the middle school, and Haley is her name, and she's 12, and Caleb is nine at Moheramet. And so I'm here as well to say a few comments around the cellphone issue. I am also a teacher, as some of you know, at the high school, and I teach science here as well. And as I sort of embark upon my thoughts, I'd like to, around cellphones, I'd like to acknowledge that increasingly and appropriately, we as a district are beginning to focus more and more on the wellness of our students. We are asking questions about stress, about homework, about definitions of success, and we're actually preparing to make practical steps to improve on our social-emotional education. But what I feel is potentially missing from the discussion here around social-emotional wellness, as well as cellphone policy, is the question, what is the district's role in helping to shape kids and their relationship with technology? So much of the focus of this present discussion around the middle school policy has started because of wording from that policy, and I think rightly so. It's, that's been the catalyst for much of what we're doing here. However, as I reflect on the entire district, what I hear and see at the high school, what I read in Mouth of the River, what I read in the scientific literature, and what common sense just tells me, and what I see happen at home, is that we need to treat this cellphone discussion like we would any other curricular question. What do we want our students' relationships to be with technology upon graduation? We have to plan, as we say in education, with the end in mind, and begin to plan backwards. Good curriculum development does this. We ask, what do we want to accomplish, and we plan backwards. And I would argue that the cellphone policy issue should ask the same thing. What policies, and more importantly, practices, should be enacted in order to help kids have the healthiest relationship with technology possible? Over the years, many of my teacher colleagues, both at the middle school and high school, especially those who teach science, and we see the integration between technology and science education, we've wholeheartedly embraced technology in the classroom. For years, there was stress put upon the idea of tech integration. We sought out grants to buy more equipment. We sought out grants to buy more equipment and participate in professional development designed to help use technology more effectively for student learning. This has led many of us to actually encourage students to bring their own devices, especially in the years when we quote unquote, didn't have enough. I've done it. Up until last year, the Oyster River Middle School policy used that exact language, encourage. And in many respects, we continue to do it. But just like society as a whole, I would submit that the district hasn't kept pace with how rapidly technology has changed and more importantly, how our students are using it. We haven't adequately asked the question about how technology is affecting our students on a social and emotional level. Why, I would ask, are we considering these very questions about social and emotional learning when it comes to homework and other curricular issues, but not that of cellphones? What I'd like to suggest is that perhaps the best thing the district could do for our students of all ages is to thoughtfully consider the question, what kind of relationship do we want our students to have with technology? And then plan backwards from there. Do we want students who are dependent upon cellphones for their social interactions? Or do we want students who can sit and talk with other students at lunch or in the hallway? Do we want students who deal with conflict through social media? Or who can speak to another human being face to face about emotional or hard issues? Do we want students to always feel like their cellphones need to be nearby and plugged in? Or do we want students to know what it actually feels like to turn the technology off in order to be present with those around them? Please know I am in no way advocating for getting rid of technology within the school. It has an important role to play in education and preparing our students for the future. What I'm advocating for, however, are policies and practices that are age appropriate, thoughtful, research-based, and defendable with the educational best practice that have at their highest priority, helping our students become human, emotionally healthy, socially present, and academically prepared humans.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to call the public comment to close. I have the motion for the approval of the minutes from the January 9th, 2018 public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes? Denise?
I have a motion to approve the January 9th public hearing minutes.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Al. Discussion changes. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those minutes are approved. We have the regular minutes from January 17th. Could I have a motion to approve those? Brian?
Motion to approve the minutes from January 17th, 2018.
Moved by Brian is her second. Second by Denise. Are there changes to those? Denise?
Yep, just a very minor change on page three. Let's see. Is it page three? Was it page three? I know Dan was helping me find this. Thank you. Page three. All right. Paragraph two, line three, yes. So this was when our athletic director was talking about the unified coaches. It said Andy noted that right now there was no stipend in place for the unified coaches and that the coaches are paid out of the officials line as a game worker. I read that fast and I was thinking that that was like different coaches. So I just would like to put in that, the unified coaches. So just repeat unified coaches, just to clarify that those are the coaches that are being referred to.
Okay. Are there changes? With that change, could we vote to approve the minutes? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those minutes are approved. Then we have a motion to approve the, the non-public meeting minutes. Have a motion to approve those. I have, I have addition. Put maybe a good emotion in.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Al, second by Brian. I think we actually did take an action. It seemed like a long time ago and if I have this wrong, please correct me, but I think we actually did take a, take a, an action. And so I'd just like to propose we add, the board unanimously approved the annual evaluation of Superintendent Morrison directed Tom Newkirk, Denise Day, and Dan Klein to make the final editing changes so the evaluation could be shared with Dr. Morse at the February 21st, 2018 meeting. I think that's what we did. So we don't have to vote on it again, we can move right to, is that the understanding?
That's what I, that's what I remember.
Okay. So if we could add that to the non-public minutes.
Can you pass it?
Yeah, I'll pass it out. If you can read my handwriting.
I'll rewrite it if you want.
Yeah, Kenny, Kenny can, Kenny can make an improvement on it. I'm really in the trouble with that ones of you. Okay, with that change, do we have, we have a motion to approve this, this moved in second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the non-public minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the, the district?
This is him.
A few announcements. On March 21st, the PSAT and SATs will be administered at the high school. On that date, we will also have the ninth graders involved with the Wellness Fair and the seniors will be involved with Community Service Day. So we're very excited about that opportunity for the students. We also have, this week, our boys and girls basketball teams are going to be going to the elementary schools for Read Across America and so we have a lot of excitement around that as well for our boys and girls basketball teams. Last week, on Thursday and Friday, we had about 36 students and faculty together, 36 people trained in bystander training. And bystander training is a program that is an evidence-based program. I believe I have, there may be an insert in your packet about that. UNH has a, a group of researchers that are involved with a project called UNH Teen Relationship Project, bringing in the bystander. And this project is funded by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. And Oyster River High School is participating in that. 36 people participated in the training and those, from there, we will have members of the 10th grade involved with that as part of the advisory program. So that, we had a lot of wonderful, positive feedback from the people that were involved with the training and there's a lot of excitement around that. Also, I would like to talk a little bit about graduation. So we, I'd like to propose a date for graduation today and that would be for June 8th. Without any further snow days.
Optimist.
Yes. Without any snow days, we would be at 996 and a half hours. The state minimum for seniors is 960, so we have about 36 and a half hours in addition to the state minimum. So that does give us a few days, it's about six hours a day. So it gives us a little bit of, of cushion if we do have future snow days ahead of us.
So you take six snow days to have to make this date unworkable, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, that is though, taking into consideration, two days, teacher workshop days becoming, which I know you haven't spoken about, but becoming academic days. So if we, that, the 996 and a half hours is assuming that those teacher workshop days become academic days for seniors. So if we lose those two days, then we'll be down about 12 hours, but we would still be, we'd be around 984. And we, and we would need, as a minimum, 960. So we would still be over about 24 hours.
So that recommendation will be coming later, but this is a calendar change that requires the board to approve the recommended date for graduation to be June 8th. So we would need action by the board so we can inform parents. It would be, I think it would be ideal if we did it tonight so we could start informing parents.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to make our graduations date June 8th.
Moved by Al, second by Brian. So it seems like you still have enough cushion to.
We do. We do. We have about 25 hours and with six, with six hours in a day, we do have some cushion.
Okay. Questions?
I wish that the schedule conversations didn't always revolve around minimum standards. We spend way too much time talking about the bare minimum when we're talking about the schedule and the calendar.
Well, I think that's only to let you know that we're exceeding the minimum, Michael, not that we're trying to get to the minimum.
The discussion is around, how much room is there above the minimum? How much wiggle room do we have left? That's what I'm hearing here tonight.
I think really just, we're anticipating the board would ask that question, so we're answering it in, in the presentation. Because the logical question would be, how do we, are we going to meet state standard, right? So it's not that we're encouraging the minimum, we just want you to know where the base is.
Okay. Are there questions? Okay. So the motion is to approve June 8th, 2018. It's graduation day. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, all those opposed? One opposed?
One opposed.
One opposed.
Michael.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Kathryn Flore, Director of Student Services. I often don't get to share very much in my world because it's all confidential, but we did receive a recent letter from the State Department of Education, Santina Tibido. She's the State Director of Special Education, informing us that we had an indicator 11 check, which is timeliness of our initial evaluations for special education. So when a student is initially evaluated, we have a timeframe that used to be 45 days from start of the process to end, including calendar days. That has now changed to 60, but this was measured during the 45-day time period and they, the previous three years of compliance for Oyster River Cooperative School District, we are 100% compliant, as we were in 2015, 16, 2014, 15, and 2013, 14. So four years in a row, 100% compliance. The Bureau of Special Ed appreciates the district's efforts to achieve compliance with this indicator and will continue to work with the district to ensure ongoing compliance. So it's just great news for the Special Education Department. I can send a letter around so you can see it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We have it.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Other announcements from the district? From the board? Denise?
I have two. The first, I'm just going to make a plug for the Oyster River Community Read. And people might have seen posters around the towns. And also, there's these brochures and they have all sorts of events listed on them. So there's tons of stuff going on. Some of them are films and lectures, some are discussions, workshops, there's stuff for kids, things for families. And if you go on their website, it's a little bit hard to nab, at least for someone who's not a techie. There's like little horizontal lines next to the logo and you actually have to click on the horizontal line to get to the schedule of events. So I really encourage people to check these out. I've attended a couple of them and they've been wonderful discussions centered around racism and diversity, primarily around the book, Waking Up White, but not entirely. There's, there's been some other discussions. So that's that one. And then the second thing I just wanted to note is I really appreciate all the community members who have come out tonight to speak and to let us know your thoughts, particularly around the cellphone policy. We have gotten a lot of feedback around the survey about being, you know, it's one question and how, you know, and I really want to make it clear, at least from my perspective, not speaking maybe for the whole board, but certainly for me, that in my mind, the idea behind the initial survey, very short, was simply to get some baseline data. It's not like, oh, you know, 60% said this, so therefore the policy is going to be this. That wasn't the connection at all. It was just, we really, as much as we appreciate people who come to the board, you know, we, at least I know, that there's many, many, many individuals who don't, don't come forward and just trying to get some, some baseline data in terms of where the community stood on this issue. And certainly we'll be having a lot more discussion around that.
Okay. Michael?
Couple things. As I walked in the front door of the building tonight, I was glad to see Noah's picture, the first one on the left as you come in. That was kind of cool to see. So that's the wrestler who, that's the picture from the state championship. Related to the device policy, I am also the parent of a fourth grader who will hopefully be a middle schooler next year. And so I would love to see, I'd love to have a little bit more sense of where, where we're headed with the device policy. I, I reviewed the materials that the policy committee had in their, in their packet last week. And I think, I think it's good that we're looking at what other districts are doing for policies, but I also think that we need to make sure that we're not looking just at the blanket district level policies, but also at the, at the school or at the age level specific policies. Because I think that in some of our peer districts that we tend to track, you'll see that, that we would, if we did that, we would see there's a lot more nuance when you look at specifically the middle school or the elementary policy and not just the, the top level J whatever, J I something, something, board level policy. To that end, also, I don't feel like I've got a good sense of where, of the roadmap for this discussion about devices and device policy at the board level. I know that the policy committee is looking at it, but I appreciate some more clarity on what type of discussion we expect to have on the 21st of March and when we are, when we think we're going to be able to have a substantive conversation about the device policy at the board level.
Do you want to go? Kenny?
One thing I want to call to the attention of parents in the district is once again, there'll be the partnership between the Durham Parks and Rec Department and our middle school with Camp Reach. And historically, that's been a program where kids go to the middle school in the mornings with some academic programming. There's been a free lunch in the past and I assume that will continue. And then in the afternoon, there's an assortment of programming that's run by Durham Parks and Rec with an optional day to add on Fridays where people take field trips. The program has been very, very popular and last year, families got shut out that applied late based on the capabilities of the Durham Parks and Rec. They just, the staffing wasn't there. And to point out that even though it is completely run the afternoons by Durham Parks and Rec, there's no differentiation between whether you're a Durham child or a Lee child or a Madberry, the decisions even on who to include was just first come, first served. It had nothing to do with that. So just to look at that and keep in mind. And then maybe to follow up on the cellphone policy, public comments, Denise's comment and Michael's comment, and then being involved in policy committee, I, I'm having the sense more that I would be more in favor of having a board table discussion. And we've heard a lot about the survey and I, I don't really even know the meaning of the survey that's sent out. And I would rather see the policy committee be tasked to formulate a policy that reflects the interests of the entire board, whatever we come to, rather than the policy committee trying to craft a policy and bringing it to the board. I just think that would be more effective and I think more representative. I also, I guess I'm not a great fan of doing surveys because I think I lean towards, I think it's our responsibility to kind of look at pluses and minuses. And we hear about science and I think there are pluses and minuses with the science. And I think, I just think that has, this is a big issue and I think the place should be at a full, open board discussion and not in a policy meeting with three representatives. So that's just how I feel.
Al?
So I, you know, went to the, the meeting they had here, which was scheduling your eighth grader for high school for next year. And it, and I'm going to start with a caveat, it's my third kid doing it, so it's always difficult. You know, you may want to take it with a grain of salt. So I asked some other parents about it and specifically, how can we make it better? And I think somebody this morning had a really great comment to me was like, he's like, well, I only went there because I wanted to support my kid. His schedule is already baked in. And when you start to look at what kids' schedules look like as they move to the high school, well, they're probably going to take a foreign language because a lot of our kids are going to go on to college and that's a requirement really. And then we've increased the number of kids that are participating in the music program, so a bunch of those kids are going to take the elective. So their schedule really is already baked. What you're really looking at is the difference between, do I take six classes and seven? And so I think when I looked at that, how And so I think when I looked at that, how can we make it more effective? I think there was a lot of time that's spent on like the nuts and bolts of the elective system, which parents can kind of figure it out on their own. But we missed the bigger philosophical picture. And the bigger philosoph, we've actually spent a great deal of time changing the high school daily schedule. The question is, why? Why do we change that high school schedule? And what does it have to do with, as I'm going in there, making this decision of what class does this take? How does that relate? And so, you know, it's kind of interesting, when we do the homework survey, when you do it, it really kind of has some great information in there that parents that are sitting there should look at. And that is, you see a bump up between the number of kids that are doing less than one hour and doing two to three hours. It's a pretty significant jump that occurs when you go from eighth to ninth grade. Also, kids that are going to participate in athletics, the middle school athletic program tends to be, I don't know the best word, but it's not as time-consuming as when you go to the high school. So those kids that are moving in there, those are two time-added things that are going on. How does that fit into the daily schedule? How does the new daily schedule accommodate it? What's the best choice for me? And it's like, so when I looked at that presentation, you couldn't quite figure that out. It should have really been, let's start with what the high school schedule looks like. How does a six-class schedule and a seven-class schedule fit in it? What does that mean to me, if I'm doing that with athletics? And that way, it allows a kid and their parents to get a better sense of what they can handle, what's the best fit for them. And I think, so again, there's very, very limited time that you get all the parents together. That's a really good place to do that. And I think, again, there's great information that came out of this baseline homework survey that would really fit in to that presentation, and allows kids to begin to think about what they're choosing and what, is it really an effective fit for them? So that's my two cents.
Okay. Others? No? Okay. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
I'm not quite sure why the football report falls under my thing, but, actually, first, I do want to mention one quick thing. Thank you, Kenny, for making the announcement about the Reach program. Yes, an email went out last week to all families, letting them know it's coming. They should be expecting the catalog in mid-March. As Ken said, it's, again, a partnership between the school district and the Durham Parks and Rec. Free lunch, it's a five-day program. It's, you know, really one-stop shopping. And as Ken also pointed out, it's been a very popular program the last couple of years. And so, parents, please be on the lookout for it. But it's definitely on again for summer of 2018. And actually, today was kind of summer-like, so maybe that was kind of creating that feeling. Okay. What I do want to talk about is the sabbatical committee. You should have a memo in your board packet. First, I just want to give you a quick overview of sort of the process we followed. There were nine people on the committee that are, and I wanted to take a moment to mention them, because it involved quite a time commitment. We had four teachers, Janet Martell from the middle school, Kim Sekar from the high school, Liz Burnham from Mohairamit, and Susan Leifer from Mast Way. We also had four administrators, building-level administrators. We had Jay Richard, Carrie Vage, Suzanne Filippone, and David Goldsmith. And then I was the district office personnel, and Kenny Rotner was our school board rep. So we had a full committee. We had, we ended up with four full proposals that came before us. We spent a great deal of time reading those proposals, discussing them, and so forth. And I'm very, very pleased, after this is the third year I've been involved in this, this is the first time we are really coming forward with a proposal that we're very excited about. We're here to recommend Chris Hall's sabbatical proposal for a sabbatical for next year. Chris's proposal really is, for those who don't know, Chris has been a Heinemann Fellow for the last couple of years. And really, the work that he's proposing is to take a lot of the research and efforts that he's done, and turn it into a, really, a professional development opportunity across the district in a really exciting way, using a tool called Action Research. The committee was very impressed at how he had structured it. It was very research-based, and felt very strongly that this was something that was not only something that would be exciting in the one year he was out, but it was something that we felt that could be sustainable change over time. Chris also, two years ago, or more than that, three, four years ago, served on the district professional development committee when we redesigned our evaluation model, and we incorporated data use into that. And so Chris's proposal really incorporated a lot of the things that are in our model. So I'm here to ask you to recommend Chris Hall for a full-year sabbatical for the 2018-19 school year. And we would need action tonight.
I would like to move that we accept Chris Hall's proposal for his sabbatical as proposed and considered by the sabbatical committee.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise.
Just a few comments to add on to what Todd said. I felt very privileged to be a part of that group, and there were four proposals that came in, and all of them had very meaningful ideas put forward that were both for individual development and also would provide quite a bit to the rest of our staff in our district and the students in our district. And the professionalism and the seriousness which the people on the committee took in evaluating the proposal, the really enlightened dialogue that took place as we went back and forth in considering the merits of it, was incredibly impressive. And selecting Chris does not denigrate any of the other proposals, which were also very, very elegantly put forward and had great meaning. But I think it reflects kind of the due diligence that faculty-staff put into that selection. And Chris's proposal just was a shining star. And as Todd alluded to, it kind of really looked like it will so enhance Chris's professional development, which he'll benefit from, his students would benefit from. But it really looks like it's going to have an amazing ripple effect through the faculty. And rather than initiatives that might start with leadership and then move through the staff, Chris's ideas, I think, will spread through the staff. And then just one other aside, though, in our conversation, it became clear that the policy itself for selecting the criteria could use some fine tuning. And so what we'd like to do is to kind of, now that that experience is fresh, and we really use the rubric of the policy to measure these proposals, is go back and maybe offer up suggestions to maybe through policy committee and then the board, some tweaks to that policy to make it a better document that will work better going forward.
Okay. Just a question about that. Is it the policy or is it the procedure as far as the R?
It would actually be the R. The R document.
It would be the R document. Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
That's a good point.
Further discussion of Chris Hall's proposal?
I, I'm not an educational professional. I've said that many times before. I had a, this is a fascinating read. Couple of questions I had when I was going through it are, I see that we've got kind of a cohort in the PLC that he's going to assemble to work with. Is there any sort of oversight, steering team that goes around that, working with him or supporting him as well? And what does that look like?
Well, in this, the way the sabbatical proposal works is, the sabbatical committee that reviewed continues as the, so the oversight, ultimately, he has, he reports back to us, and we review the proposal. As far as the implementation at the school level, certainly, he would still be a district employee, and he would still be supervised, as any district employee would, to meet the goals of his professional experience. One of the things that's going to be hard to do until he actually starts assembling the cohort is exactly what the structure of it will ultimately look like. His proposal involves recruiting 10 to 15 staff, hopefully, a cross-section across the district. Obviously, that is contingent upon who is interested in participating. Prelimarily, he has had conversations with colleagues across the district, and there's a number of people who have said they would like to do that. And depending on how the cohort is structured, how it would be supervised could be different. So for example, if he had a cohort of five people at Mast Way, it might be something that Carrie Vage would be actively involved in. If he had a cohort that was, you know, active at the high school, it might be Suzanne. In some ways, it's kind of like the model that UNH uses to supervise interns. You know, there's like a group, and there's somebody who's sort of able to oversee that. But again, we haven't put in place a structure yet until he creates the model, and then we'll work with him.
Yeah, I'm thinking of more of like a PIS committee than a, you know, a management oversight.
Oh, you say about his individual proposal.
Yeah, yeah. And in terms of how this gets carried forward over the next.
So each professional has a process where they establish professional goals, and their goals would then have to be tied. In fact, one of the reasons why he wants to get the process started this spring is so he can kind of get people beginning to think that way, because by contract, they set their goals by October 1st of the following school year. And he would want them to establish those as goals, and that becomes part of their conversation with their supervisor. And then the data that they're going to track to measure that would be also a part of that goal. So as far as the individual participant, that's where the tracking would take. I thought you meant the supervision of the whole sabbatical proposal. But individual professionals who are participating in this, they would be being supervised at a building level by the supervisor, and the goal that they would create would be action research-based, that they would then work with Chris to do it. Because action research is not something that a lot of teachers in this district have ever engaged in.
I'm not asking my question the right way. I'll try to figure out a better way to ask it later. Another piece of it, you kind of touched on, I think, a little bit, is the, I'm glad there is an evaluation section here. I feel like it's not very objective. And I, how does that get fleshed out?
The sabbatical policy involves the, for a proposal to be approved, the proposer has to develop an evaluation model that they're going to use, and then they would share that with the sabbatical committee. And ultimately, the results of his sabbatical would be shared with the committee, and ultimately, it would come before the board as well, and you would see the results of it as well. And it's on the sabbatical person to track their data and to show that their sabbatical accomplished what it set out to do.
And then the, I assume that this is budgeted for?
Yes.
Has he got a half-year?
He's asked for a full-year and half-pay. Full-year at half-pay, yes.
And maybe, maybe I'm wrong, Todd, but I think you described right. I mean, there really is goals, and those goals will have to be presented and really approved for completion. But the other thing is, Chris doing the sabbatical, he's not going to lose his contact with the Heinemann Fellowship that he's doing now. And that too, so he's going to be working still with them, working with our school district. So it's almost like he's had classroom learning with the fellowship. Now he's going into the real world with it, and will bring that, will bring that real world back to Heinemann and get that critiquing advice working. So they're in a way the experts in Chris's department. This is.
Right. Yeah, in many ways, he's trying to create sort of a mini-fellowship program here within the Oyster River for as many people as are interested in being a part of it.
So we'll need a motion from the board. We have that.
We already have one. We have a motion in a second.
Can I have one more question? I promise this is the last one. So logistically, how does the half-day work? If he's half-day for the full year, how does that work?
No, no, no. Half-pay for the full year. So he's, he would, there would be a long-term substitute hired for him for the whole year. So it's half-pay. So he's, he really wants to do this, is what it comes down to.
Got it.
So it actually comes out almost close to a wash as far as the budget goes.
Yeah. From a legislative standpoint, it's pretty much zero for the district.
Okay, the last teacher's contract, wasn't that? We struggled with this to come up with a way to make it economically viable.
Right. Because typically, when you hire a substitute for a year, you're hiring them to be a step one. And typically, a person going out on sabbatical is the top of our pay scale. So if they're taking half-pay, the differential is roughly what it's going to cost to hire a substitute for the year.
So could we vote on this? Ready? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Good luck to Chris.
Congratulations, Chris, if you're watching from home.
Congratulations, Chris, yeah.
Andy?
So I didn't send any material to you guys, because it's very brief, the update. As I had mentioned before in previous meetings, there's three committees that the football proposal will need to go through with the NHIA. Went through the football committee and was approved by the football committee by a vote of six to three. So that hurdle's been completed. The next hurdle will be the classification committee, which meets on April 11th. And Suzanne and I will be attending that, as they'll have some questions that'll need to be answered, as well as the Portsmouth Athletic Director and Principal will be attending as well. If it clears that, it goes on to the NHIA Council, which meets on May 17th. So that's when we would have our answer as to the approval or nonapproval.
And that would be at play in the fall?
Yes. Yeah, they moved, they moved it along pretty quickly for us to potentially be able to do that.
Question. I'm just curious, I think you said it was six to three, the vote?
Yes.
So what was the concern with the, do you know what the concern was for the members that were not in favor?
I think, I think, yeah, I do. Part of it was the timing.
The time, yeah.
Yep. That was one piece. There was one piece of language in the co-op agreement that we had written up that they questioned a little bit, but I think the executive director understood what it was. It was about, it was about the fact that, you know, everyone would have an opportunity to try out. We were saying they would try out for a particular team and be placed on a particular team. They were concerned that we didn't realize the no-cut policy, but we do. So I think that there was a couple, couple things in there that, you know, I wasn't there, so I don't know who voted against it or what. But I would expect any questions that they have will be cleared up when we go to the classification committee, because we'll be there and we can answer any questions that they have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thanks.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. So because this is our only official business meeting of the month, my report is more lengthy than usual. The first thing I'd want to say is, a couple of meetings ago, parent Brenda Wharton came to the board, and she invited us to go to Unified Sports basketball game. And I did that tonight. And I have to tell you that it was the most heartwarming experience of the new year for me. It was amazing to watch our students play together, those with special needs and those who identified as their partners on the same court. And one of the most marvelous things that I saw was extremely handicapped kids physically in braces, or extremely handicapped kids with disabilities who were literally handed the ball. And for that moment in time when they were holding the ball, it might as well have been a million dollars. And when the most handicapped children had the ball, the least handicapped children backed away. So like, they could actually possess the ball and ultimately pass it to a peer. It was just incredible. So I would encourage the audience, as well as board members, for the next opportunity, the next season that we have Unified Sports, to find time to be there. Because if you really want to get a sense of who Oyster River is, it happened tonight on the basketball court at 4:00. So that's one of the nicest things I have to report tonight. I also want to go backwards in time a little bit. Up until two school years ago, superintendents were able to agree with each other if a child was experiencing manifest educational hardship. And what that simply means is that a child, usually at the high school, would be struggling for a given reason. The two superintendents would talk to each other, and they would agree to take the other's child, because in the current school system, the child was struggling. So we got this request yesterday from a neighboring school system. And what changed in the last two years is now these requests require your approval. So in order to avoid a non-public, I'll give it to you in generic terms. So in order to avoid a non-public, I'll give it to you in generic terms. We have a child in another school system who's a junior, who has been academically doing very well, but has been struggling lately because she's experiencing significant bullying. And the superintendent contacted us and asked if we would be willing to take the child on. I would have said yes if this had been two and a half years ago, but now I'm asking tonight that the board take a positive position on this, take a motion in a second to approve the transfer of a student to Oyster River under the manifest educational hardship. The school district is willing to pay full tuition to have their junior attend our high school. Todd did contact the school system. We have a fairly good sense of the child and we think this is exactly why this law exists. So we would ask the board to support us in allowing this child to come to Oyster River High School.
Give a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept a student from the other school under the manifest hardship.
Move by Denise, second by Dan. Obviously, if we're going to ask particular questions, we're going to have to go into nonpublic, but if we're ready to approve this without necessarily going into particulars, we could have a vote in public. Okay, ready?
Just a general observation, not specific, just, and I'm sure we'll do it, but certainly this is a difficult move to make for the reasons it's being made in the age. And I just know that our district will do what it always does and make that transition as smooth as we can for this child because this is a very, very difficult situation.
Thanks, Ken, absolutely, we will do that.
Ready to vote? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Motion passes.
So you know the process now that we've said we're willing, that superintendent will go to his board and do the same process with his board. And then the parent will meet with Suzanne and Heather and make a transition plan for this junior. So thank you very much for that support. A more difficult issue that I communicated with the board on both through your messaging, voicemail, and also through email. You know, what's, the school shootings that are happening across the country, you know, I think the latest statistic is 250 students have died as a result of deadly weapons in our schools across this country. And every year, we faithfully go through our emergency handbook. We have our procedures. Our principals are great at practicing those procedures. We've even gone so far as to empty the building onto school buses and see how long it would take us to move them. And, you know, all of that preparedness is really important. But I would, I would say that, you know, that happened, that kind of practice happened in Florida as well. So this most recent shooting, yes, we went through all the process and we reviewed our emergency plans and we have them practicing, practicing them in the schools. But a parent challenged me while I was away and it was, it actually was kind of a good challenge. She asked David and Todd and I, you know, how safe is the modular? And we said, well, you know, we have the plan. We lock it down like we lock the school down. There are cameras, just like there are at the school. And then she asked the pointed question, which quite frankly, I'm embarrassed to say we didn't think about until she asked the question. You know, somebody pointed a gun at the Mohammed School and they were shooting at the facade. It's brick. If somebody pointed a gun at the modular, it's a stick-built building, which means that a gunfire from a distance could pierce that building, the modular. So that kind of, you know, really stopped us in the tracks. And then we reached out to New Hampshire Homeland Security and we said the logical question, what more could we do to make the modular a safe location for our students and staff? And his response was, you're not going to like my answer. And that is, there's nothing you can do to make that building safe for staff or students. So that happened as recently as yesterday when I got back and Todd and David had been handling very professionally the dialogue with the parent. But once Homeland Security said, there's nothing you can do to make that building safer than it currently is, the only logical outcome was we needed to shut down the modular and bring the kids into the schoolhouse. So, you know, the rationale is, you know, we want those 44 children and those two staff members to be as safe as the children who are inside the schoolhouse. And so I made the decision to, over February vacation, to shut down the modular. I worry about our staff. I worry about our students. When something like Florida happens or, you know, Connecticut or where have you, you wake up as a superintendent somewhat in a cold sweat because there but for the grace of God, go on. This can happen anyplace in our country. So I contacted Tom and shared where I was heading and he said, you got to do what you think is right. And so what I thought was right was the decision I made yesterday to pull the kids out of that building and bring them into the schoolhouse. There are ramifications, other than all, it's not all, you know, roses. The art room will have to go back out into the east wing where it was two years ago. That would be for the remainder of this school year. And of course, packing up classrooms, both Trish and Liz will have to pack up their classrooms and Jim Rozicki will have his staff move their materials into their classrooms. If we have a really good plan, we're hoping that we can have them operational on the Monday they come back. But in terms of Friday, we're going to hire substitutes so that Liz and Trish have a chance to pack up their rooms so it can be transitioned as responsibly as possible. So we communicated with the parents of the classroom. We've communicated with the faculty and we've communicated from an SAU level. And I think that we, we did the right thing. So I opened any questions the board has at this point.
So I think it was my first year on the board was Newtown. It actually occurred. And I've, I did the presentation of the budget and really talked about, you know, the addition on to Mass Way, but really in the back of our mind for the last five years has always been a discussion about safety and the modulators. And, I mean, I think that it was one of the primary reasons we said we weren't going to do modulators at Mass Way. We really needed an integrated building that's safe for everybody. And, you know, I wish I could say that it wasn't going to happen again, but that doesn't seem to be the case. It seems to have become a commonplace occurrence. And so I think that I'm really, really happy in terms of all the work that went in the fall in terms of facilities, thinking through the Siemens project, thinking through the, where the middle schools are, where the elementary schools were going, picking up the money from Homeland Security to redo the front of the building. I think we've been pretty proactive about trying to think about safety at those buildings and do it in a, in a thoughtful way that wasn't fear-based, but really was thinking about what we could do best for our kids. So I think there's, a lot of great work was done in the fall and unfortunately, that's going to help us for next year.
Thank you. Another piece of really good news is we have definitive, it's in your packets, that the district has, has been officially approved without reservation now for the $572,000 grant to redo the front of Mass Way in order to make it a safer entrance, to allow Carrie and her staff to be able to observe visually who's coming towards the building and who's asking to be coming in. I think that's going to be a major improvement. And the fact that Oyster River got that grant is nothing short of a miracle because those are the kind of grants that Oyster River generally doesn't get. In terms of diversity, I'm really excited to share with you that, you know, we go back to Denise's report on the community read. They've been holding workshops for the community and I attended one of them. And, you know, one of the issues that we know is if we're trying to solve the problems of the world inside the schoolhouse, we won't. And the diversity work that's going on now has broken past our schoolhouse into our three-member communities. And I'm really excited to see that, that development. And along those lines, I was invited among a select few, if you will, about 30 business people, public providers outside of education to be part of a multi-day workshop around diversity, and that's New Hampshire Listens. I wanted to make sure you guys knew how much I appreciated your support in going to the national conference. Tom asked me how it went when he came in. It was the best national conference I ever attended, not because I got the award, but by, I got to listen to people like Doris Turnz Goodwin, they said? Yeah. She was one of the amazing speakers and she talked about our, our, the presidents that she's done biographies on and what a current president can learn from those presidents that she's done biographies on. She's an amazing job. That was probably the most impressive piece. And then as I was sharing with Todd, there's just been incredible research around averages that I can share with you at another time, just because I know we've got a lot to get through tonight, but it was also incredibly enlightening and challenging. Suzanne alluded to the fact that I was going to request today that March 23rd and May 25th no longer be professional development days, but that those days be reverted back to student days. I am making that request officially tonight and it does require board action as it's like track calendar change.
Denise?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that March 23rd and May 25th become student days.
Move by Denise, her second. Second by Michael.
I have, just, I just have a, an observation, I guess, or whatever. Where we're, I know we're now on the whole hours system and, and I know that we have continued the practice this school year of two-hour delays. And I'm wondering if maybe, looking forward to next year, to maybe consider if one hour delay would be enough because where we have the later start time now, and I have heard from a couple of elementary school parents in particular about when it's a two-hour delay and how late the day starts. And so I'm just wondering, and I mean, it's only an hour, but I mean, what do we have? We've had like three or four of them now, right? Yeah, four. So, you know, that's another four hours or half another day. So I, I would just like, you know, to maybe consider for next year, and I know it would involve like changing language and all the handbooks and things like that, but to consider doing a one-hour delay going forward.
We actually had that conversation at the very beginning of the school year, Denise, and part of my reluctance was that I need a certain amount of time to be able to judge whether the delay should turn into a complete shutdown. So an hour doesn't really give me enough time to make that assessment. You know, you know, I'd be, maybe splitting the difference and giving me 90 minutes because the weather pattern is so doggone, it's been so doggone hard to predict this year because it hasn't been snow that's crushed us. Most of the time, it's been ice. And even, even as I go through these days, I'm sitting there thinking, you know, is this, you know, is this going to be a disaster? One day, the most recent one, you know, I did the half day because they had predicted that the ice and snow were going to come right in at 11 o'clock. And so I was, so at 11 o'clock, of course, it wasn't there and I was thinking, oh man, this is really, you know, this is what superintendents live for. 11:30 it came. You know, so they weren't too far off. It's not an exact science and I try, I am trying to make the best judgment calls I could possibly make as I know you guys know that. But 60 minutes really doesn't give me much latitude to figure out what, what, what I need to do next. So maybe 90. I think, you know, two hours may be too much, but I just need a little bit more wiggle room than, than 60 minutes.
I'm sorry, did we have a motion to approve it in a second? Okay. Other questions about converting the teacher workshop days to actual school days? No? Okay, all of us in favor of making that conversion, please raise your hand. Seven in favor?
Against.
Did Hannah vote?
You don't have to vote if you don't.
No, I'm against changing it.
What?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So we put no for the student?
No.
All right, your first no, Hannah.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's almost been a year, it's my first no.
So I just wanted to give a quick update on the strategic plan. The focus groups went extremely well. We added a focus group thanks to Suzanne's hard work. We actually added a high school student focus group. We also created an opportunity for anyone who had thoughts they wanted to share after the fact that they could send them in and that's happened. So now, NESDEC is making, trying to make sense of all the data they've collected, but it's, it was, it was really well done and well-attended, very well-attended. The middle school facilities committee is, is right on target. They're doing great work. Tom and Mike and Ken are on it. The, so we're, we're doing what we need to do to be ready for May or June for a recommendation to the school board. And then Tom just asked me to do an update on Orchard Drive. We have not received a single financial bid related to Orchard Drive. There may be some interest with UNH and possibly doing a SWAT, but we'll need to pursue that further. So those are the items that I wanted to bring you up to date on.
A business administrator?
Just, you did a great job presenting all of those and you're channeling your inner Todd Valick with the length of your report tonight, so.
Thanks. I'll, I'll tell Todd tomorrow.
I don't know if that's a compliment or not. Student Senate?
All right, so everything's been pretty relaxed at school. The MALE U1 team went to a conference at Boston University a week or two ago and Alana Irvin received an award, which is pretty exciting. The Student Senate is trying to find a new representative for the school board, which seems to be going well. There's a lot of enthusiasm from some students who seem interested, so we're hoping that's going to go well. And then along with this, the Student Senate has also been discussing, discussing the National Nonpartisan Walkout on March 14th to advocate for the safety of students in school. And then on another note, I brought in a fellow senior senator, Emily Allison, to present the cultural bulletin she's been making through the Senate and I brought the bulletin for everyone. She's going to come up and present it.
Okay. So I'm Emily and I've been creating the cultural bulletin for the past few months. So basically, it's a monthly bulletin with religious holidays and current, like current international events that are basically used to educate our students and our communities about the different cultures and to promote diversity in our schools. And that was kind of the hope for the Senate when creating this because we believe it's important for our schools to know what's going on around the world, not just in our own community. So.
Thanks, Emily. All right, that's it.
Okay, cool.
I just, it's very impressive. I had no idea, so thank you.
Emily, can you send that to Hannah and then Hannah can send it to the board and then we can make sure that your publications get to them?
Yes, yeah, I have the, I have the bulletin email if I can, I can, should I email it to Wendy?
The future ones.
Oh, future ones, yes, yes, I can.
Very meaningful work and thank you for doing that.
Okay, moving to discussion items, Dan?
Thank you. Sorry you had to stay so long. I appreciate being able to just experience the school board. I have a handout, I'll pop it up. Okay. All right. So good evening, my name is Dan Vallone. I'm the Policy Director for Reaching Higher New Hampshire. Reaching Higher is a nonpartisan education policy nonprofit. We're based in Concord. We work on state K-12 primary, K-12 education policy primarily. And then we work a lot around the state doing kind of community engagement work with school districts and parents, students, and the business community. So I'm here tonight to talk about SB 193. This is a piece of legislation currently in the New Hampshire House of Representatives. It is with the House Finance Committee. They need to vote on it by March 14th in order to have it be considered to go to the Senate and onward if it passes. So Senate Bill 193 is a statewide education savings account program. This bill was introduced last session in 2017. And I'm sure most people have heard about it and are probably familiar with it, so I apologize in advance if I go over anything you already know. But just to set the basic conditions so we all have a common understanding of how this program would work. The basic concept is that under Senate Bill 193, a parent would sign a contract with what's called a scholarship organization. The contract would obligate the parent to assume full responsibility for the education of their child. And in return, the parents would gain access to a savings account, which would have the equivalent amount of state funding that that student, that student's school district would have received. So the state provides adequacy aid as the primary form of K-12 education. The base adequacy aid is $3,636 per student. And then there's different, what's called differentiated aid, which is additional amounts that go to students who are, for example, from families who make less than 185% of the poverty level and are free and reduced-priced lunch eligible. Students who are English language learners, students who receive special education services. So the, the amount of funding that a parent could gain, could gain access to would range from around $3,600 to $8,000 under certain, certain conditions. And they could then use those dollars and they could, in that account, to either send their child to private school or homeschool and use that dollars to purchase, basically any kind of, anything that they wanted to do with, with respect to educating their child. So they, they do enumerate the educational services that can be bought with this state funding. But it's a pretty expansive list and allows for a lot of autonomy and flexibility with, by the parent. So the parent receives 95% of that state adequacy aid. So if we just want to use $4,500 as kind of your average for the state, that's about, about approximately, right? The scholarship organization retains the other 5% to do administrative costs. The eligibility criteria for the bill, in Senate Bill 193, state that any student, the any student who is currently in public school and who has been attending public school for one year, or who is starting kindergarten or first grade, is eligible for the program, provided that they also satisfy one of four additional criteria. And the criteria are currently, the family makes less than 300% of the poverty level. That's about $74,000 for a family of four. The student has an IEP or receives services under Section 504 of the Rehab Act of 1973. The student attends a school that was deemed to have not provided the opportunity for an adequate education two years in a row. It's a specific accountability clause that relates to the requirements that school districts operate under state law. I'll talk about that more at the end, because accountability is also a separate, yet related piece of legislation going through the House right now. And the final criteria that they could satisfy is that they have applied to but were not admitted to a charter school or had an unfunded scholarship from the Education Tax Credit Scholarship, which is New Hampshire's existing program for students to receive scholarships to private school. So Reaching Higher has done a number of analyses on this bill. We've been following it very closely since it was introduced last year. It was referred to a study committee at the end of last session. That study committee reviewed it, made an amendment in November, and then, and then recommended that it ought to pass in, at mid-November of 2017. The full House of Representatives then passed the bill at the start of the session this year, and then they referred it onward to finance. And what we have done in our analyses is we looked at pretty much four basic provisions, and we've elevated what we think are concerns about the structure of the bill. The first is the financial impact. And so that's the handout that I, I just gave to, to you. What we've done is we've modeled both on a year-one basis, and then we also created a 13-year model for the Finance Committee, saying, what could this look like to the state of New Hampshire, based upon certain assumptions around participation and take-up rates? And so the handout I gave you kind of walks through our, at a very high level, approximating our thinking for how we modeled it for the state, which is basically, we looked at student populations in each school district. We used free and reduced-priced lunch as kind of a proxy for eligibility, because we don't, districts don't report special education as a percentage of their enrollment, nor do we know how many students apply to charter schools and who weren't admitted. There's a lot of ambiguity. So we use free and reduced-priced lunch, because that's publicly available state data that is updated on an annual basis. And then we, we just kind of nudge it upwards to try and accommodate for the other criteria so that it's approximate, or at least conservative, but yet valid from a structural standpoint. And then we say, so I outlined the four towns that feed into Oyster River, based upon the free and reduced-priced lunch that is reported each year by the DOE. And then we nudge it up by 15%. So that's what you see in those kind of boxes. Then we say, okay, of your eligible population, what's the participation rate? What's, what is it like? How many students are likely going to participate in this program? And this is one of the concerns that we've highlighted repeatedly for various audiences, is that there's no real strong data to indicate what a reasonable participation rate will be. Education savings account programs are relatively new across the state. There's only six states that have them on their books, and two of those states have not implemented them. So realistically, we're talking about a very small N size from which to draw any kind of influence around participation rates. So we erred on the side of being very conservative in our models, and we basically looked at the availability of private schools as a proxy for how likely students are going to participate in this program. So districts that have a high concentration of private schools, we said that that is a district that is more likely to see a higher uptick of participation relative to districts that don't have private schools around them. And so we modeled across the state, basically, we said, the participation rates are going to be as low as 0.5% and as high as 2.5% across the state. And so that's what I showed. On your handout, I only went out to 2% of a participation rate, but basically, it shows this is what we think it would might, it would look like in year one, for the number of students who might reasonably participate in the program. And then with those, when we have a participation rate, we can then start to look at the fiscal cost at the district level. And so that's what that final table shows. And we used, on that handout, and what we did in our model that we gave to the Finance Committee, is we used the data that is reported on a municipality basis about how much adequacy aid you're going to get. Because the way the state does that, it calculates on a town basis the cost of providing adequate education. And then that, it uses that as basically the basis for how much state aid each town gets. And so that's what you have there. And then we just multiply it by the number of students that we said participate. So I think on your handout, it is as low as two students and as high as 10, with kind of your, the year-one impact being a loss of as low as $10,000 to as high as $42,000 or $43,000 or $45,000. So when we look at the state, though, what we found is that even using what we think are pretty conservative participation rates, because realistically, there's no reason why it couldn't be 5% or 10%. I mean, there's no, there's no one, there's no strong data out there in any way to indicate a definitive, it's going to be this amount. So using the conservative participation rates, we, we found that about 1,000 students will participate in year one. So what that means is that districts across the state will lose about $4.8 million of state aid, or see that state aid diverted, 95% of it going to parents, 5% of that going to a scholarship organization. And then, as we look forward, years one, two, three, four, and out to 13, typically, these programs do grow. Again, not a lot of data to kind of validate or kind of project any kind of growth rate. So we just do a, a small growth rate, and that kind of $4.8 million loss basically cycles every year. So over 13 years, it's a significant amount of money that the districts are losing or seeing being diverted to these accounts. Two other kind of fiscal challenges from a statewide perspective. So first, the eligibility criteria opens up the program to students who are not currently in public school. So there are students who are in private school in New Hampshire who are entering kindergarten or first grade and would be eligible either because their families earn below 300% of the poverty level, or the student has an IEP, or any of the other two criteria. So the state is going to be required to appropriate new dollars, new education dollars, to cover the savings accounts for those students. So again, we don't really know, we know there's 16,000 students in private schools in New Hampshire. I think there's roughly 2,500 students who are in preschool readiness or kindergarten as of this year. What percentage is eligible is, I mean, again, there's not a data point that we can point to. So we said, let's assume between 10% and 30% are eligible, and then, again, 5%, 10%, 15% participate. Our model, we found that that's probably going to be about $1,500,000 in year one, assuming, again, pretty conservative numbers. And then that will grow over time, because in year one, we're only, the state is only funding students who are in kindergarten and first grade. By year 13, we're now funding students who are never going to be in the public school system in grades K through 12. So that expense grows fairly quickly. And then the final kind of fiscal note for the state is that there is a provision that was added to the bill in November, that if a district loses an amount of state aid in excess to 1/4 of 1% of the prior year's voted appropriations, then the state will essentially match those losses to make it whole. So I think, but when I looked on your website, I think you had an operating budget of about $43 million last year, give or take. So your 1/4 of 1% might be $107,000. And that, the modeling year one, you don't trigger that stabilization grant, so Oyster River just absorbs those losses. But Manchester, for example, student population around 14,000, a budget of about $170 million. We project that Manchester is going to see a loss, or going to have about 150 students participate in that program. So they then receive a stabilization grant to cover losses above about $430,000. So the state's obligation under that new program is, is significant. Even, even looking at those conservative take-up rates, Manchester, Nashville, Rochester, Concord, all have a lot of private schools, have large populations of students who are eligible for this program. So the cost to the state is significant just in those two provisions. The two last kind of points that I want to make before, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and there's a couple other bills that I think relate to this. Two other kind of notes to be aware of with the bill is around special education. The first is around special education. So the bill has language in it that says, participation in this program has the same effect as parental placement under federal law. What that means is, so the federal special education laws, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's the main law at the federal level that governs special education. It's also the main source of funding for the state around special education, about $45,000, $50 million a year. So parental placement means two things at a very high level. The first is that you waive your rights under IDEA. You no longer have a right to any specific service under your IEP. You no longer have a right to due process, to seek an appellate judgment on any kind of action the private school may take against the student in terms of expulsion or suspension. So there's a significant loss of protections that happens anytime a student is parentally placed in private school. And parentally placed just means a family is voluntarily choosing to withdraw from the public school system, enroll in a private school. It's not the same as a district making, an IEP team making a placement decision to have a student enroll in a state-approved special education school. The second kind of major impact of parental placement under federal law is that the provision of dollars shrinks significantly. So every school district, every LEA is required to do what's called Child Find every year, where it goes out and identifies students, including students in homeschooling and, and private schools, who are eligible for an evaluation and to, who are eligible to receive special education services. A district is required to spend this proportion of its IDEA dollars on students who are parentally placed. The proportion has to match the number of students who are parentally placed relative to the total special education population. So if a district has 100 students in it who are eligible to receive special education services, and 10 of those students are parentally placed, then roughly speaking, the district is obligated to spend 10% of its IDEA Part B dollars on providing services for those 10 students. So right away, that means the total dollar figure shrinks considerably. The second kind of thing to know with that one is that there's no guarantee for any specific service. So that, you know, that hypothetical district that I just kind of described could decide to spend its prorata share for those 10 students on reading supports. Maybe only five of those students need reading supports, so the other five students receive no services. And that is completely fine with federal law. So we raised that as a concern, because there's nothing in the bill that obligates anybody to tell parents that's what's going to happen. So what we found, when we looked at these kinds of programs across the country, and what was found in a federal report from the Government Accountability Office, is that most parents do not know, that they go into these programs not equipped or provided with information to understand, here's how special education is going to change for your student if you decide to participate in this program. So we think that when people have information, equipping people with appropriate information is always the best thing to do in terms of improving decision-making. So as it currently stands, the bill is problematic from that standpoint. And the final issue that we kind of are concerned, I would say that we raised with the bill, is around accountability. And there, there are accountability provisions in the bill, but they are very ambiguous as to what is actually required of students who participate in this program. There is a clause that seems to suggest that any private school that accepts students through this program needs to provide a statewide assessment of some form or fashion every year. But there's also a clause that seems to suggest that you can satisfy the accountability requirement by having a portfolio review with a superintendent, principal, or the commissioner of education. So those are two very different forms of accountability. There's validity and lots of different ways of finding, you know, assessing students' progress and growth. But kind of having a transparent process in terms of trying to understand the impact of the program, we feel is very important to include. And so the lack of clarity will cause problems when we look out three years and we try and say, is this working? What is the impact on the state? Not being able to have a kind of reliable assessment mechanism, we think is a concern that people should be aware of. The, the connection and accountability is also important, because this isn't the only bill that deals with what we could just kind of term "school choice." So there's actually three bills that deal with school choice in the session right now. So SB 193 has certainly occupied the, the most oxygen and received the most headlines. But there are two other bills that I just kind of draw to your attention, too. The first relates to manifest educational hardship. So it's, it's House Bill 1492. And I really appreciated the discussion that the board had, because this is a very sensitive, important policy matter, because there are situations where a student is not thriving under current conditions and might be better suited in another educational environment. The bill, as currently crafted, significantly lowers the standard for what might constitute a manifest educational hardship. And it is ambiguous such that it could mean that a school doesn't provide AP courses means that that's a manifest hardship. Or a school doesn't provide certain athletic opportunities, that that could constitute hardship. And so the concern that with that bill is, again, that this is a sensitive area, but you are talking about obligating local taxpayers to pay, to educate a student in another district. There needs to be a clear standard that makes sense and is practical from all kind of stakeholders' viewpoints. And the bill is currently rife, it does not have either a clear, you know, a clear definition of what actually constitutes a hardship, nor does it necessarily require a sufficient level of stakeholder engagement when you're talking about obligating local taxpayers' dollars. And the third bill is a, is a, I think it's House Bill 1368. And it is a, an expansion of the education tax credit program. So New Hampshire put on the, a law into the books in 2012. It was held up in court for a couple of years. But basically, this is a program where businesses can receive tax credits to offset their business profit tax and business enterprise tax by donating to a scholarship organization that then uses those dollars to make scholarships for students to go to private school or homeschooling. The program has, has, is relatively small still, but it's grown, not insignificantly, over the last three years. The bill would allow individuals to now receive tax credits for the interest and dividends tax in the state for the same process. You know, the relative merits of lots of different school choice programs is a very important discussion, and one that we're very happy to have. And if anybody has questions, happy to talk about that. But I just flagged that there are multiple ways, multiple bills that deal with school choice, and that at the same time, New Hampshire is going to be transitioning to a new state accountability system that districts are going to be held accountable to and actually ranked. system that districts are going to be held accountable to and actually ranked in some fashion. And that's important, because SB 193 includes that eligibility clause that says if you attend a school that's deemed to be failing two years in a row or not providing an adequate education, you're now eligible. So as we think about transitioning to a new state plan for accountability, and we also have these bills that deal with school choice, we flag them, we raise the concern that are we really thinking holistically about if there are schools that we think are not delivering an adequate education, what are we doing as a state to actually support those schools or find ways to improve the total educational outcomes? Because, again, I think there's a discussion about the relative merits of a school choice program, but there are far more ways that we need to be talking about in terms of intervening in a school to improve outcomes for students. So there is a big picture here that I think has not yet really come into public, the public space as much as perhaps it would in other years, simply due to the magnitude of high-profile issues at the state and federal level that we are dealing with. So when we talk with school boards and school districts, we like to try and just elaborate a little bit on that larger picture that we hope people are paying attention to. So that is about it. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has, of course.
What safeguards? Thank you very much for coming out tonight and sharing this with us. What safeguards in terms of, say, I'm a parent, single parent, and boy, I could really use that money to help me pay my bills, and so I'm going to pull my child out of school to homeschool them, you know, because I can really use $4,000, $5,000 to go towards my rent?
Right.
Like, what are the safeguards?
So it's a great question. And I would, to be totally honest, I think it would depend on who you talk to, in terms of what the answer would be. What the bill says is that the scholarship organization will review receipts annually, and then it can, it will report fraudulent spending to the attorney general's office, who then can take action. So my interpretation of that is that there actually is very little in the bill that obligates any specific mechanisms in terms of how is the money distributed to families. So, and to use a specific example, in Arizona, which was the pioneer in this specific form of education, they require, so one, their, Arizona DOE runs the program. They require participants to use a specific debit card, and they actually regulate the vendors that the debit card will work for. So you can't take the debit card, go to an ATM and cash out your dollars to then use for whatever purpose you might like. So it has these fairly restrictive safeguards. In Arizona in 2016, even with that more fulsome series of safeguards, still found a large amount of fraudulent activity in a relatively short amount of time, simply because it's very, even if, even if you only restrict the debit card to vendors, what's to stop somebody from returning the product and receiving cash? There's not much there. And again, in New Hampshire, if you talk to the scholarship, the New Hampshire's existing scholarship organization, what they say is that they will use a similar program. Again, nothing is in the bill that requires that. And the bill also doesn't restrict, it's a very, I think, unusual method to try and think about oversight, because in theory, the bill would enable anybody to create a scholarship organization. You just need to be 501(c)(3), register with the attorney general's office or the Department of Revenue, and you are more or less good to go. But functionally, New Hampshire only has one organization that is currently in the space ready to go. And so it's an unorthodox approach to be so reliant on an entity that is not governmental, and yet is the only one ready to take the reins on this.
Surely, this is going to be challenged as, particularly if the money goes to religious schools, because the separation of church and state. And my understanding is the ACLU will probably, if this passes, will probably bring a suit and may want school districts to take, you know, be signatories or whatever the term is, to be part of it. I just wonder if you have any sense of that process?
So I think I would agree that if it does, so actually, I presented to the House Finance Committee yesterday, and it was interesting, because after the presentation and when the committee had kind of adjourned, they made the observation that pretty much no matter what, there will be a lawsuit, because if it passes and includes religious schools, and the ACLU has already more or less indicated it is going to sue. If religious schools are taken out, there is another entity, the Institute for Justice, I think, who has also said they would then sue. So I think no matter what, this is, this is a contentious issue in the legal sense in every state that it has gone into effect in or been contemplated.
So next time you go to the Finance Committee or to Concord, you can thank very much the House of Representatives there for, by a single vote, not restoring funding for pensions to us. Because they, on the backs of this, where they're taking money from us, they've also been downshifting their costs, which has hit us in two-year increments at larger than the $41,000.
Million bucks.
Yeah, a million dollars we've spent on this already. So when I look at this, it's, again, the state adequacy aid for DERM is $3,955. We're spending $18,000 here locally to pay for it. So the state is really carrying its fair share already to boot, and now they're removing money from us. And then the other thing about this is, it really bothers me, is when you look at Oyster River, we're fortunate enough that we have enough support from the community, and a wealthy enough community, that we can likely withstand the hit of $41,000. But, you know, it's the poor districts in the state. And I know the state is saying, well, we're going to come up with some increased adequacy aid, but until the money is there, who knows? So, I mean, my thought on this is, you know, someone said, why are you against school choice? And I said, well, not necessarily. I mean, we, Oyster River operates by school choice. We have 140 Barrington students that come to us by school choice, by the quality of our school. But when I look at this, it's not that the state is adding money to the pie, they're cutting money out of the pie to the detriment of all the districts. So it's really, really unfair.
Yeah. So I would also just flag for you that there is a committee charged with evaluating the state education funding formula. They've been meeting since the end of the last session. They have a report due out in November. Representative Karen Umberger is the chair of that committee. They welcome input from school districts and school boards. They truly do. It is also, I just kind of personally find it a bit odd that we would be evaluating the education funding formula at the same time introducing programs that would upset how dollars would then flow, you know, flow around the state, so.
So Dan, I just want to address 1492, the educational hardship. So you saw how, this evening, as an audience member, how we deal with 1492 very thoughtfully, very carefully, and very selectively. And in terms of the relationship we have with other school districts, when they come forward with a proposal like they had tonight, they're willing to pay the tuition cost that it costs us to educate a child in Oyster River. My understanding on 1492, as it's written, is, you know, using your example, we have a host of AP courses, and perhaps a neighbor doesn't have the same AP courses. A parent comes forward and says, that's an educational hardship. I want my child to go to Oyster River. My understanding of this piece of legislation is, there's no mechanism for the board or the superintendent to have a role in that. If they choose to come to Oyster River, the way this law is written, it appears to me that they would just appear at our doors, with no funding following and no approval of the school board and no conversation with the superintendent.
So it's a great, it's a great point. And I think that it is, I think anybody, if you talk to even like the attorneys who worked at the DOJ or the Department of Education, they would say that there's a lot of ambiguity in the bill. And so predicting any specific outcome is actually very hard, which is not a great, not a great position to be in if you're actually a school district, because that exact scenario might play out relatively quickly. My understanding of the, and I always get, I'm always nervous to talk about intent, because I don't know people's motives, and I don't ever want to think about predicting what is in someone's head. But based upon the testimony of the sponsor of the bill, he said that he wants to shift the burden from the individual to the, so basically, currently the structure, if you imagine it, there is some burden of proving hardship on the student or family, that they have to make the case that they are experiencing hardship. Again, I think in most situations, in many situations, it might be more of a collaborative process of discussion and trying to evaluate. But in terms of, if someone were to have an attorney, that it would be on the, the burden would be on the, on the side of the parent currently. And the sponsor of the bill said that, you know, he wanted to see the burden shift to the school board in terms of denying that there is hardship, or proving that there is not hardship. So the intent is to certainly, right. And so, again, with an ambiguous definition, that does, it could have some problematic consequences on the implementation side.
Now, how do they get around the paying money to religious schools? Is it because of the scholarship intermediary that is handling the money in between, so it's kind of a clean handoff to religious schools? That's to get around the Constitution? Is that how it works, or?
It depends on who you talk to. I would say that actually, what I've heard in most testimony is that they, there is a, again, there is an institution that is ready to go to court saying that directly giving money to religious organizations doesn't violate the, well, if it violates the Constitution, that our Constitution is actually invalidated by the Supreme Court decisions, which have, again, certain organizations view that as the Supreme Court of the US saying that giving money to religious organizations is okay, and that any kind of state constitution that prohibits it might be actually in violation of that. So I, you know, that, that concept has come up of essentially shifting the funds so that it's not the department giving to religious organizations. But I actually have heard most people just say they don't think that it is legally that they will, that that argument will win in court.
And you said there's four conditions. They have to meet one of the four conditions in order to qualify.
So they have, it's like a three-party, three-system eligibility. You have to be between 5 and 20 and not graduated high school. Then you need to have either been in a public school for a year, or entering first grade or kindergarten, or have received an account the year prior, and then meet one of the four. But, so functionally, I think that when most people have tried to look at the financial impact, they tend to actually just say, we should assume everybody is eligible, because in theory, basically 99% of students in New Hampshire could apply to a charter school, and only, you know, a handful of kids would get in, because we only have 24 charter schools. So there is a, there's, the eligibility criteria are very, you know, very ambiguous to an extreme extent.
A question maybe for the board, but to weigh in, too. So given the current tenor at the state level, and really the national level, it's occurring as well, should we, as a school board, be more proactive in representing both the taxpayers in our district and the students in our district by being more politically engaged with this process, which can range from going to Concord and speaking before committees, submitting letters? Should we do that as a board? Should we do it through the New Hampshire School Board Association? My feeling is, it's very important to get involved in this process, or things are going to happen. And it's easier to get involved on the front end than when things are much more settled. So somehow, I'd love to devise a mechanism of involvement.
Dan, are school boards organizing around this issue? Is there a proactive approach that our school board could jump on, along with other school boards?
So I'd actually just want to, reaching higher doesn't overtly lobby in terms of, we don't tell legislators how to vote, like, we are nonpartisan. We do definitely express our opinions on certain legislation with respect to structure and consequences. The NHSBA, the New Hampshire School Board Association, did testify in opposition to this bill. And then in the public hearing, when the bill went to House Finance, there were a number of school board members who came in and testified in opposition to the bill. And I'll just note, from my own personal experience at the State House, and just kind of in general, the input from school boards is always welcome. I really do, I mean, if we just think about the New Hampshire legislature, it's 424 people, none of whom are receiving a lot of money to be there. There is very limited staff, and so, and they're, and they're asked to review and vote on literally 1,000 bills basically every session. So getting input from people who are dealing with the day-to-day details of how policies might affect students and families and schools is enormously valuable, because that actually is just not something that is readily accessible to the kind of legislator who's being asked to vote on this. Thank you very much. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
So stick five in a break? So stick five in a break?
Homework.
Okay, this is a meeting of big topics.
Oh, man.
On to homework.
Well, thank you. So just to give you a quick background before I go into this presentation, homework has obviously been an issue that the board has asked, been concerned about for a few years. Clearly, as we've begun to look at bigger questions about mental health and wellness of our kids, there's all kinds of topics we want to look at. There are committees at both middle and high school that are actively looking at this question and you do have a, forgive me, I don't know which day you chose for your homework board workshop, but I believe it's either the 14th or 28th of March.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay. So please know that the intent tonight is for me to share a bunch of information with you, but obviously the opportunity to delve in deep with Jay and his committee and Suzanne and her committee will come. What I wanted to do is just kind of share the baseline data. In November of this past school year, we conducted really three surveys. Those surveys, we had one survey that was for students, one survey that was for parents and one survey that was for teachers. The goal of those surveys was primarily to generate some baseline data to start a conversation around homework because I think we talk a lot about the issue, but perception is everything in terms of understanding where people are feeling on it and what is actually happening to kids and families. So we wanted to get some baseline data. We also wanted to try to put it in a context to try to understand it from the standpoint of where does homework fit into other parts of a student's life, you know, use of structured time, unstructured time, all of those things. And also look at how do students and families feel about homework and the process of homework as an entity. So as I said, we conducted the survey, three surveys really. I'm not a statistician, but I would venture to guess that any survey where you get more than half of the people to be respondents is pretty valid information. So we had 60% of student participation, 54% of parents, and this is middle, high school, and then 81% of all of our teachers. We didn't mandate that any one person do it, so that's why there are people who, for various reasons, chose not to do it. So I'm just going to jump right into it. I've tried to break this down as much as I can between middle and high school. This first slide really looks at the whole middle school, grades five to eight. What are students and parents reporting as homework? One of the things that really stood out in my mind was how much in sync parents and students were with the data. So I think, you know, I think that speaks to the validity of where their perception is at. Clearly, if you look at the middle school as a whole, 55%, that light blue color means they're saying they have less than an hour of homework a night. So 57% of parents say that that's true, 55% of students say that's true. The dark blue color is one to two hours and obviously the green, red, gold and the other colors are the two to three, three to four and higher. One of the things that I, as we go through this, I would, we can talk a lot about the average and you can certainly, I could look at this and say, you know, 91% of parents and 88% of students say they have two hours or less of homework a night. There you go, that's all we need to do and that solves the problem. But I think it's important that we look at that group that is reporting the high amounts of homework because I think ultimately that's who we're going to talk about. And so as I go through this, as we narrow in, like for example, looking at issues like who's taking seven courses and that kind of thing, there's a population there that shows up periodically throughout. So anyway, that's the middle school. At the high school, you could obviously see that, again, the parent and student reports are pretty similar, but again, you can definitely see that at high school level there are more kids reporting in that higher end, kids and parents reporting in the higher end. So like the green area, which is two to three, you see 32% of kids, 33% of parents are reporting that. Three to four hours of homework and 19% of kids, 14% of parents. One of the things you will notice as you go through this, the parent and kid perspective at middle school was much more in sync. At high school, it was less so. My guess is that's because a lot of times high school kids are in their bedroom late at night finishing their homework and their parents have already gone to bed. So maybe they don't have quite the same, as accurate a perspective at that point. So that's the high school. Again, I challenge you to kind of look at that group at the top end. You see particularly looking at the high school students, 19% reporting three to four hours, 6% reporting four to five and 2% reporting five and up. That's 27% of our student body says they're doing three or more hours of homework a night. Coincidentally, when you get to the question about seven courses, you'll find that's about the percentage of kids that are taking seven courses as well. So it's just important to kind of correlate these things as you go. So if you go through it grade by grade, not surprisingly, the younger grades report having much less homework. You can see that in fifth grade, a very high percentage of kids reporting having less than an hour of homework. Get into sixth grade, that pattern seems to continue. Seventh grade, same pattern. But then you do, when you reach eighth grade, you do see a jump in the number of kids reporting higher amounts of homework. When you start, I mean, it does, obviously it challenges you to say, okay, well, what's different at eighth grade? Well, one of the big things that's different at eighth grade is that's when kids can choose to take algebra, which is a, you know, a high school course, a more rigorous course. And so, again, later on, I'll show you a slide where kids are saying, where's the biggest source of their homework?
Math.
Math is the place that they're saying. So you can see, you can make these connections as you go. So that's eighth grade. Then you get into freshman year, as Al pointed out, you do start to see, the intensity ramps up. You see a higher percentage of kids, you know, ninth graders, 42% reporting two to three hours, 10% reporting three to four and 2% reporting four to five. So you've got 54% of the kids reporting, you know, two or more hours of homework a night as a freshman. And again, parents are in the same category, so it gives you that sense. Sophomore year, you gradually do start to see a higher percentage of kids reporting higher amounts of homework. Tenth grade, by the way, is the first year really where the full elective system starts to kick in and kids are more likely to be selecting the more challenging pathways. Eleventh grade is without question the year of the highest level of kids reporting high volumes of homework. And I would point, just, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but at the high school level, we did have, you know, roughly 90 to 100 kids as the sample at every grade level. So it was a good sample, is what I'm saying. So you can definitely see at junior year, that's when kids are reporting the highest volumes of homework. You know, you start at 27% saying two to three, 22% three to four, 15% four to five, 11% five and up. So you've got a very high percentage of kids in junior year reporting substantial amount of homework. Twelfth grade, I think that pattern continues a little bit, but there is a bit of a drop-off. You do start to see more kids reporting they have less homework. I can definitely share with you the comments, but actually it was interesting to read some of the comments from seniors who, as they're talking about homework, I think they've decided like, you know what, I'm good. I stopped doing homework at a certain point. So certainly seniors' perspectives of homework were different than juniors', no question about it. A lot of them had already gotten into college, you know, those kind of things. So you can see that there's a drop-off in the self-reported amount of time seniors are doing homework. But I do think it's important to note that there's still, I mean, anybody who's gone to the senior science showcase or the senior art show at the end, these kids are not like messing around. They're invested in some pretty intense stuff right up until literally the day before graduation when the senior science showcase comes.
You know, I wonder in the twelfth grade though, because twelfth grade is when you're doing all the college application, all that kind of stuff. And so I'm wondering, we almost like missed the question, is that filling the homework void, you know, the additional work that you got?
Good question. Yeah, it's a good question. I'm sure it does begin to fill it in. Although I do think, as you look, when we look at the kids taking seven courses by junior and senior year, there are fewer kids taking seven courses. And I'm wondering if seniors in particular haven't figured out, you know what, I don't need to take seven courses, I can take six. Or they've said, I'm going to take a UNH course and so in order to do that, I'm only going to take, you know, X number of courses. So there's a certain amount of trade-off. But yeah, it could be, there's no question, that can be a burdensome process. I do remember some kids, you know, applying 10 and 12 colleges is not uncommon for some of our kids to do that many applications. Thankfully, I didn't have to pay all the application fees because that's pretty pricey to do. So that gives you a sense kind of of the grades, you can see a progression that takes place. We also asked teachers about homework, what they perceived. Again, we were only really able to break it down by middle versus high school, but you can see 74% of middle school teachers said they give less than 15 minutes a night, 61% of high school teachers said that, middle at the 15 to 30 minutes, 19% of middle school, 31% of high school, and at the top it was 8% of each. So there's a little bit of a disconnect between what kids are reporting and what teachers think they're doing.
It's a pretty significant disconnect.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there really disconnect though? I mean, if they're taking six classes and the teachers are, that's 90 minutes.
Yeah, I tried to figure out a way to extrapolate, like what would, if you assume this proportion of assignments, like if you take, like let's use the high school, let's assume you're a seven-period kid, 60% of those classes give you 15 minutes, 31% give you 30 minutes. You know, you're probably right because you've got two classes that have given you 30 minutes, four classes that have given you 15, that's two hours right there. And then maybe you have one that gives you 45, so it's two hours and 45. It's still on the low side of what we're hearing kids reporting. And I do, when I did present this data with high school and with middle school staff, one of the conversation topics we had was a lot of the work that kids are being asked to do is very much, we have very high motivated kids and the work is not necessarily do these three questions and then go to bed. They're like these sort of open-ended problems and projects to do. And if you're a kid that's really perfectionist, you're driven to really want to do something really well, what a teacher might think, oh, do 30 minutes on that. You might spend three or four hours because you want it to be just so. And I think that's something we have to kind of get our heads around because giving creative assignments is all well and good, but there still needs to be some parameter around what is the expectation here and when do you say, okay, I'm going to stop? So I think there's that. So that's teacher perception. We asked kids, how successful do students feel on homework? Generally, I mean, 6% said not at all, 15% said a little, but, you know, 29% said some, 34% said quite a bit and 16% said a lot. So basically what they're saying is, there's, you know, about 79% that feel some level of success when they're doing homework. Talking to parents, you know, does your child have successful strategies to get homework help? 74% said yes, 7% said their kid never needs help and then 19% said no. So there's a, 19% of parents feel that their kid does not have a plan for how they get support when needed. Just teacher perspective, like when they were asked, kind of what are you asking kids to do? 52% said finishing classwork, 51% said simple practice, 35% other, 23% projects. And I do think that other is that category. I was just talking about this very creative, innovative ideas that kids really enjoy doing. In fact, one of the things I found striking was one of the courses at the high school that kids report a lot of homework in is art.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wouldn't have thought that, but if you're really passionate about art, you're going to spend four or five hours in the art room doing the project. So I think there's some of that to think about. So projects, 23% of teachers said they don't assign homework and 7% said complex tasks. And I think that from, in presenting this data to both the staffs, there's definitely desire to spend some time, more time talking about what is appropriate homework and what kind of things are, you know, so they definitely want to pursue that topic more. This was one, I, basically kids were given all of the classes that they took and asked to rank them from most to least homework. Math was the number one source of homework from a kid perspective. So basically, in order to kind of group them, I took first and second choice, if you ranked it as one and then added them up in that third column, just to give you an idea of where did it fit in. So clearly math is the highest one, ELA number two, science, social studies, and you see art down there. 11% of the kids said art was their first choice for, and I think they were basically saying, that's the place I spend the most of my time when I have extra homework. And it's probably more juniors and seniors that are really specialized in that area. Perceptions of homework stress. This is one that I, as I looked at, and I think that's where it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the difference of perspective from teachers to parents and kids on how much homework. Because you can see clearly 19% of students are saying homework is causing them a lot of stress. And by the way, that's the same number of kids that said they don't feel successful doing it. So I would be willing to bet that's not an absolute correlation, but there's probably a connection. 28% of students said they feel quite a lot of stress. And you can see that if you look at parents, they're a little bit less than kids, but the teachers' perspective on a lot of stress and quite a lot of stress is very different. You can see teachers recognize their stress, but they see it as being more of a moderate level of stress. They don't see it as being to that higher end. And again, until you've been in the home with a child who's struggling on homework and they're wrestling with something, it's hard to know what that means. One of the things we did talk about with high school staff is because we have this choice-based model, it's very hard to control for an individual student's workload when they're choosing. No two kids have the same experience, so it is a challenge to say, how do we keep our eye on the prize in terms of how do we keep it at a reasonable level? So clearly more conversation around that has to happen. Moving on, we also asked about different types of use of time. So this question was to middle school students and parents about how much time they're spending on structured activities. And structured activities were defined as clubs, sports teams, part-time jobs, things that there's a structure you have to go to at a certain time, that kind of thing. So clearly, there's, you know, 17% of students said they spend less than an hour on that, 49%. This is again, all middle school kids. And there's, again, there's pretty consistent agreement between parents there. So if you look at it, again, averages can be deceiving, but it looks like, you know, one to three hours of structured time is pretty typical for middle school kids. Then they were, we also asked middle school kids about unstructured time and unstructured time was defined as, you know, hanging out with family, friends, you know, it was just time that you could choose to do what you wanted to do. And again, the same kind of one to three hour range seems to show up again, but you can see there is a, you know, the 23% of two to three hours and 12% of three to four. So there's a little more variety there on that one. At the high school level, structured activity, there's certainly more kids in the higher end of that. You can see there's more kids saying they're doing two to three and three to four hours of structured activity and I think we know. of structured activity, and I think we know that to be true, because we have 73% of our kids on a sports team, and we've got a really active community service club and student government and all those things. So our kids, you know, engage in a lot of structured stuff. And then again, the unstructured, again, it looks like that one to three hour range is about what most, the average, but again, you can definitely see that there are kids that have more unstructured time. Question, we asked them questions around homework on vacations and weekends, and there is a little bit of a disconnect, although I don't think it's, it looks more significant by the numbers, but if you stop and think about it, I don't think it's quite as significant. 60% of students and parents report that they have home, regularly have an hour or more of homework on weekends, and 60 cents, 66% of teachers say they do not assign homework. Again, you go back to, if one of three teachers is assigning you homework on weekends, it's not surprising that you might have an hour or so of work to do. And I did hear from a lot of teachers when they talked about the nature of things that they would assign. They didn't specifically say on Friday, you have to do this this weekend and pass it on Monday. They might give it like two weeks in advance and it's due on a Monday. And kids then manage their time by saying, okay, well, I'm going to do it on Sunday afternoon. Which, you know, I, but there is, it's built in that that's a choice that kids can make. So it's hard to say, are they be mandated to do on weekends or is it structured that way? And again, I think there's certainly lots of room to talk about, you know, working with kids on time management and how you go about doing that. I would say if you combine the high level of involvement in structured activities that our kids have, it's not unusual that they'd say, you know what, I got a chunk of time on Sunday and I got this big project to do, why wouldn't I do it on Sunday afternoon and save myself having to stay up until three o'clock in the morning the night before our soccer game or something? I mean, it makes sense. So anyway, so there's that. And then the vacation, 57% of parents and kids reported having homework on vacations. 89% of teachers report never assigning out on vacations. And again, it's the same kind of logic. There are very few teachers, in fact, nobody admitted it, to assigning an assignment like the day before a vacation, it's due the day after a vacation. It's, you got this long-term project and it's due two days after vacation. It's that kind of structural type stuff. And then this slide, and this is not from the survey, but, you know, it's certainly relevant information. The question has come up about, you know, we have a seven-period schedule at the high school, how many kids are, are taking seven classes? And certainly in the ninth and 10th grade, 32% of students are taking seven classes. And at the 11th and 12th grade, 25% of students are taking seven, seven classes. So you can see how all of these things, you kind of put them together, you can definitely start to build a profile of where, what's the issue and begin to try to understand it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
With the high stress levels, do you feel it's because poor planning on the part of doing the work? Or is it, you know, is it just because they don't know how to deal with stress, like we as adults know how to deal with stress? I don't foresee stress like you and I would foresee a stressful situation coming. Is it just because of time management? How does that usually?
I think the answer is yes to all of those things. I mean, it's, different, kids are different. I mean, there are, I mean, for some kids, yes, it is a time management issue. For some, for some kids, it, I frankly think that when you look at that group, that's the seven-period a day, you know, they're probably also the kids that are taking AP chemistry, AP, you know, they're very high performing and they're putting a lot of stress on themselves. And I think it's sort of a, just, it's, it's a, it's a cycle, and I think we have to work with that. I think, again, this is a topic we're going to deal with at the, at the board workshop, but I think talking about how the new schedule model at the high school and how some other structural changes might play a role in trying to mitigate some of this, I think that's, that's got to be there. So I, so I think there's a lot of variables there. Certainly, teachers being aware of the workloads of their students enough to be able to make modifications so that students aren't getting lots of big assignments in the same time span. And that, again, the, the beauty of our choice model is kids get to choose lots of different things. The hard part is, they're not choosing the same thing, so therefore, one kid's stress is coming from a completely different place than another kid's stress. So helping them to manage that is kind of a system-wide challenge.
I would add to it is that component, I think, that you kind of mentioned Todd, that kids are not trying to do the bare minimum. And so when you have a more open-ended kind of project, kids that are real achieve-oriented and really want to put forward an incredible effort, because they're, the project isn't as finite like a multiple choice test, I would imagine that some of these kids too are, are stressing because it's hard to know, when is this good enough? And the revisions happen and they keep moving through it.
Absolutely, and that's absolutely it.
Speaking of achievement, I've done, I've done some research on homework as we've been talking about it. And one of the interesting things that I've read about is, is sort of a, you know, our educational culture around homework. And one of the things that we'll probably talk about at our workshop more, and maybe you have some thoughts on how to evaluate it, is do teachers, are there teachers who would like to assign less homework but feel as though it's an expectation of the district, of parents, that they do assign the amount that they do? You know, do they feel empowered to really tailor homework in the ways that, as educators, they feel is most appropriate?
Right.
And then the other big piece of this is, you know, on some level, a lot of homework comes down to a fundamental question of, where is the right environment and who is the right instructor to guide a student to master something? And, you know, I think in, in every case, we would agree that the classroom with the teacher is the environment, and yet, we're sending work home, which assumes either that the student has a mastery such that they can be successful, or that parents are somehow assumed to be capable and equipped to sort of fill that surrogate role of teacher. I mean, they're really big questions, but, you know, and I, I don't know that you get at it with a survey necessarily, but those are the kinds of things that I hope we really try to get at, and at least indicate to our teachers that we're interested in really hearing a candid perspective on.
I, I do think the work that we're doing around competencies and assessing competi, I mean, homework ultimately is an instructional strategy that is, you know, a very traditional strategy, but nonetheless, it's, it's a strategy for how you provide instruction. If you look at what most teachers are saying, it's like, well, it's practice something that we started in class, or finish up something that was started in class. So I think the assumption is most of the time, that is a continuation of something that kids have already acquired some level of mastery and it's just, they need to finish it up. So I do think that is a time, a management thing. But I also think, going back to, as we, as we more fully embrace the competencies design and, and the implementation at the classroom level, it's going to lead us to questions, okay, how do I know when a student has, has acquired this skill? And I think you're absolutely right, that in most cases, the best way to do it is for the teacher to actually see it in action, and, and the student is performing it in the presence of the teacher, and they're actually able to see the struggles and knows where they're at, to be able to determine that. And I, so I don't think it's a, one or the other. I think it's a conversation that we have to kind of work through this. And I think more and more of our teachers, and I think you'll notice, at the, at the middle school in particular, you'll notice that the, the, the percentage of kids reporting significant amounts of homework was significantly lower. Part of that's the age appropriateness of how much work a student should have, but part of it is also, I think, more of the teachers there are embracing a competency model. And so what they would define as useful homework is, is very different to them. And so they're, they're much more performance task-based and, and that kind of thing.
I think the other issue, Todd, that I would add to that, is that the teachers at the middle school are organized around teams, and so they do know what each other is putting out there as homework. And so it's a very coordinated effort. And the randomness of students and how they take their courses at the high school, and the lack of coordination at the high school plays a factor.
Oh, that is absolutely true. And in fact, when I was principal here, we, we made many attempts to try to get our head around what it was so that all teachers could know what was happening. And we, we used to have this massive matrix on the wall in the conference room where everybody's supposed to put their assignments, and you're trying to figure out, okay, which of these matches up to my students? And that's, that's, again, the beauty of choice is that everybody gets to find that thing that they're passionate about, but the, the hard part is, how do you, how do you rein it in so that the kid is really passionate about something? You know, it's natural when you're really excited about something, like if you're like really big on, on robotics, I think that's a great example. We have kids that are spending, you know, 10 hours a day doing robotics-related stuff here during the build season for robotics, and it's really exciting, but it's at the expense of something else. And when you're really excited about it, you just naturally, you want to do it. And I think that's part of what's hard to get our heads around, is how much of that is a choice that a student is making? How much of it is the structure of the way it's presented to kids and the expectation of what it is? Because we don't want to take away the thing that makes our kids, because you, one of the things, and I know, and people who've been in the sociology classes over at the high school when they talk to kids, that's one of the things you do take away, is all of the kids talk about something they're really passionate about. And that's the component that drives, to me, is what's the signature of the Oyster River education, is that finding that passion? And so we're trying to harness that, but at the same time, not overburdened with all these other, other things. So we've got work to do for sure.
That's kind of what I want to ask, is, I mean, to go back to a term that Michael used, like a roadmap, that's going to get somewhere other than just talking about. Because, and I think as a board, we can, we can have a workshop, we, you know, we meet every two, I mean, there's a limit to what we can do, you know? I think the work probably has to be with the teachers and the staff.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering whether it's, maybe looking forward to the workshop, to see what's, what's the plan and what, what might an outcome be? Like, I know if you look at Hanover's, Hanover has very specific homework policies, you know? And a lot of schools do. And I don't think we have done that, and we don't go there.
Right.
Maybe, maybe we want to like say, what are characteristics of good homeworks of a parent, you know, kind of, you know, maybe want to like, I'd like to see what, what might come out of it. In terms of scheduling, I mean, I've been bored for everybody to tears, you know, talking about the seven classes, but I mean, are there things in terms of guidance that could come out of it? So we're going to say like, you know, before you sign up for the seventh class, you have to meet with the guidance counselor just to make sure, is this really the right thing for you to do? You know, is, so there's some things that are probably not going to come from us.
Right.
That you and the staff are going to do.
In fact, I would, I would argue, like, it, most of it probably won't come from you, other than, you're, you're absolutely right, there are a lot of districts do have a, a policy that kind of guy, gives some guidelines. But generally speaking, those policies are intentionally ambiguous to, to prevent a lot of structure. I do think it is developing, building and school practices around how we manage it. Again, I know we'll talk about it more, how the schedule interacts with homework, there's certainly some potentials for practices that could be put in place that would reduce the amount of homework that any, so the, a kid taking seven classes can't have seven classes on the same day. That's one thing right away, that addresses some of it. But then, how much farther do you go? Do you say homework can't be assigned on days that you don't have class? You know, and then they only have homework for the days that you do have class? And then right away, it reduces it even more, because you have two days of the schedule that you only have four classes. So there's room to, to, to do that. And I think that's a conversation that the high school will have to weigh in on.
So I was going to say, people initially, their quick reactions, okay, let's look at, we're going to limit the amount of homework, or what is the, but it's like, to me, there's a deeper cultural issue here, and that is, like, you have 32% of your kids are self-selecting seven classes and then throwing a structured activity on top of it, and that by, no matter how you slice it, that is a punishing schedule. And so there's a lot, I mean, that's a third of our kids are putting themselves in what is naturally going to be the extraordinarily stressful situation. It's going to, I mean, again, just think about that in terms of, if you have two hours of structured activity, your day ends at three, it's five, you get home at, say, 5:30, and you add three hours of homework, four hours of homework on that, that is a long, long stressful day that you've put on it. And it's like, and it's so, while we're, you know, the focus initially goes towards, okay, like, what can we do to limit the homework? Well, the deeper question is, people are putting themselves perhaps in not the wisest solution, and, and is it really necessary? Are you getting the most bang for your buck out of taking seven classes like that? And if your day is structured like that, what the heck are you getting out of school? So I, I think there's a, a deeper cultural question of like, you know, and I, I keep coming back to Greg Gappard, who used to coach cross-country for a really, really long time. And his philosophy on running was, how can you do the least amount of running and be really successful? Not overtrained? And it's like, and I think that's kind of what we, I would hope culturally, we're looking here, is, I'm not trying to take away your choice, but I'm trying to, you know, get you the skills that you need to get out of high school, but not completely destroy your love of learning and lead you down this really punishing schedule. Is there a better way that we can get a lot out of things, still get you, because a high quality, or a high percentage of our students are going to college, competitive colleges, and, and they're looking for merit money and all that, and that's driving them to do all these things? How can we, is there a better way we can do this?
And I think that's a great, a great question for us to wrestle with as a community, because I do think that's, that is the nature of the student we're dealing with.
Okay, I think we're going to have to call this part quits.
Come back to talk again in a month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think it's fantastic survey.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, what a, what a illuminating survey, I think.
Very comprehensive, thank you.
Just briefly, school board self-evaluation. We're required by policy to do that once a year. There's certain, just some questions, and I anticipate this is informal. People each take a turn, like what, in the next meeting, what maybe answers some of the questions that you think are most pertinent to what we've done. So we're not going to like rate things or anything, it's just, it's a, it'll be a conversation. If that's okay. That's what I think we did last year, similar. I don't know how much time we're going to have to talk about that, but why don't you put it on the table, okay? And we'll see.
Yep. So, like I said, when I made the motion to amend the agenda, with an election coming up, given recent events in Florida, obvious pattern of school shootings, our decision to close the modulars out of concern for student and employee safety, I just felt like we should have a public discussion about the reality that we're dealing with where, and again, correct me if my understanding is not correct, in our state, our attorney general has decided that the federal law banning firearms in public schools is unenforceable due to a prevailing state law. So, you know, and, and I think one of the critical issues here is that people in our community, to varying degrees, assume that, well, they don't know that that's a reality, and they assume that we are maintaining the same level of safety and policy adherence on an election day when our school is being used as a poll and when it's not. So do we need to, do we need to, to change course? Do we have time to change course this year? You know, and I don't know the answer, but I just felt like it was important for us to have that discussion.
Change course meaning?
Well.
Say that the school can't be used for polling?
Saying that the school can't be used as a polling place. I mean, in the past, Dr. Morse, you could probably describe it better than I can recall, but we had not had our high school students come to school on a particular day.
So presidential elections, we have historically made that a tax development day, because the turnout is massive on any presidential election. On gubernatorial off-year elections, we have tended to have school while those elections are going on, and Todd and Suzanne just redirect students away from the polling places in the, at the multipurpose room or the gymnasium. So we haven't canceled school on non-presidential elections. So on presidential elections, it's not an issue because there's nobody here, but on non-presidential elections, which happens every other year.
And just for the sake of context.
Except that we also have our town election. Our town election every year is at our high school.
That's true. But again, we base it on the, the turnout, whether we cancel school or not.
I, with regard to a discussion around safety, those decisions, I believe, were made more on, you know, traffic of people utilizing the facility, the, the limited parking, the disruption to the school day. If you're looking at an issue of safety, you're ostensibly If you're looking at an issue of safety, you're ostensibly assuming one person could wreak havoc in your school, and you would, if you saw them walking into the building with a weapon, you would legally not be able to do anything about it, is my understanding.
So this issue came up through an email to me after the Florida incident, from a parent. And I said to the parent, I'm confident that even if the attorney general didn't step in, that the local police department would, and I see C. Chief Kers. And he said, absolutely, the Durham Police Department would come on-site and deal with the issue. Now, you know, his hands are tied in terms of how he could deal with the issue. Obviously, if the person wasn't threatening anyone, then, you know, it would be just having a police presence. So, yeah, it's a very complicated issue, and, you know, off and on, Todd, Selig, and I have had this conversation, and of course, the town would very much love to maintain the high school as a polling place. And certainly, I understand that. But I also, you know, raised the issue with Todd, that, you know, perhaps the town has grown large enough that they need to be thinking about precincts, awards to vote in. For example, we, in a presidential election, we're trucking hundreds of UNH students into the facility, or they are. And why wouldn't we just establish a polling place at the university in the student commons, where they don't have to be trucked anywhere, they can just walk over and vote? So it is, it's a big issue for the town, you know, and I know that, you know, Todd would like to be included in any conversation, so I guess what I would, you know, encourage is that we don't make a unilateral decision, but we say, okay, this is a, this is a significant issue for the school board, and we want you to sit down with Todd and, you know, come up with potential recommendation. So I do think with the new library, the university setting, and the new town office, precincts are possible, they've just never been part of Durham's culture, it's always been the high school.
Yeah, and I mean, just, I have no problem with the school being used as a polling place. I think it's appropriate, but just, now, going back to your point about local law enforcement, are you saying that enforcement of the ban on firearms in a public school would not be a practical, it would not practically change, or?
The chief is limited by state statute as to what he can do, and we have a culture in New Hampshire that's incredibly permissive in relation to guns. So you could have a gun that is not visibly present, you know, it's, and you're legal in New Hampshire. You can carry it on your side, I'm like a cowboy, you're legal in New Hampshire. You can walk into the legislative building in Concord, you're legal in New Hampshire. And basically, what the legislature has encouraged, and the attorney general is supporting, is that you can walk now into schools with a gun, and as long as you're not brandishing it and threatening anybody, you're legal in New Hampshire. I mean, that would be the interpretation that I would be making at this point, based on the written communication from the AG. Essentially, he said, if you have a problem with firearms in your schools, and you think it's a violation of federal law, call the federal marshal. You know, that's not a very practical solution.
I think their interpretation was, once the school was a polling place, for that time when it's a polling place, that trumps it being a school, and therefore, you're allowed to have guns in polling places in New Hampshire.
That's actually where I thought we were at, but Tom and I had an earlier discussion, and we think that the interpretation at the state level may be far broader than that.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but is read, just read the laws, and it seemed to me that if I was a parent, and I was upset with a teacher, and I had a conference with that teacher, and I walked into the school, and I had a firearm, that I was licensed to have, I could take that right into the school, because you can't, whether, like, a subdivision cannot have the right to kind of cancel out the state rights that the state gives gun owners. And I'd like to have somebody maybe confirm that, because, I mean, like, I'm saying, it's like, half an hour, and the internet doesn't qualify me as an expert on this. But it just, it seemed to me bizarre, because you think, I don't know if people have the perception that schools are gun-free, but there's no way that we have the right to deny people the capacity, the right to bring guns in, it seems to me. And I'd love to hear some clarity on that. But I mean, I think people think schools are gun-free zones, but they're not.
They're not.
So they're drug-free--
It's not just polls, it's a whole school, I mean, school every day.
They're drug-free, but they're not gun-free.
The only thing I would add, when we were talking, because Jim was saying, like, hundreds of UNH students, there were, we same-day registered 3,500 students at the presidential election. I sat there for, I did a two-hour shift registering UNH students nonstop, and I was one of many. So the magnitude of putting on a presidential election in Durham is truly insane. The other thing is, you know, on the town side, Wayne has passed on, I mean, he thought it was terrible with the funding and taking money away from public schools, but from Concord, the gun law stuff that's coming out is really crazy. They were trying to have it so students can carry guns on UNH campus. They were also trying to have it so that if a local municipality passed a ordinance restricting gun use, that each of the counselors in that municipality would be liable for $5,000, and we would have to pay it out of pocket.
So just before this meeting started, I was sharing with Tom that I got this email from the superintendent of schools in Lebanon, SAU 88, and he was writing to fellow superintendents. I'm writing because the Lebanon School District is holding a gathering protest, sharing of concerns about the current bill allowing weapons on school grounds on Wednesday, February 28th, at 3:45 at Lebanon High School. As you may know, Lebanon School District was recently cited as not following New Hampshire law, because the board policy prohibits weapons on school grounds. The Lebanon School Board would like to hold this gathering at this time, to let New Hampshire legislators know that there is a strong sentiment and urgency in repealing the bill that allows weapons on school grounds. So here's a school board that actually passed a policy that has been cited by the state as in violation of state law. And, you know, we do perceive the schools as a safe haven, and yet, how safe can you be if anybody can walk onto your school property with a gun?
So Dan, do you see some, I mean--
I, you know, if I had a, if I had a suggestion, I would have offered it. I'm sort of at a loss, I just felt like, given everything else we're talking about and deciding on, that we should just have this discussion. And if nothing else, to let people know that we're talking about it, we're aware of it, and I would frankly love to hear from members of the public on this.
I think Jim's idea, too, is a very good one, to start a channel with Todd Selig, and to just say, these concerns have risen at our level, and see if we can troubleshoot this and figure out an alternative.
This may be an opportunity for us to use, instead of creating more work for the school board, but to use a subcommittee made up of Al, myself, and Kenny, where they're both counselors, as well as school board members, to have a conversation with Todd and probably Kyle, right? Is it Reagan?
Oh, yeah, Chris Reagan.
Who's the--
Clerk?
Moderator.
Moderator.
Yeah.
And, you know, talk about, you know, what options exist in relation to alternatives to the high school. Because I certainly don't want to pull the rug out without them having an opportunity to be part of a discussion, and if ultimately, the board is going down the path of not using the school as a polling place, then we owe the town that conversation.
Yeah.
I imagine that we're close enough to the election this time around that--
Exactly.
Lots of hosting has been done, and I don't know if legally we could move it, aside from canceling the school that day. How do we isolate the school activities from the election activities during the election?
Cancel them. If there's any overlap, the, it's canceled. So the kids are redirected into the academic wing, and they don't mix down here with voting.
Is there-- Is the multipurpose room secure?
Police present, there's police presence.
You have those doors on the side in the back.
The chief is wonderful, he'll put whatever resources that we actually request, he'll put on-site or around the school. He, you know, was super cooperative with us, so that's really not an issue. Both Suzanne and Todd, they just redirect the kids into the academic wing, and there's very little opportunity for them to mix. Obviously, cafeteria is right, you know, in line, but there is definitely a demarcation point on non-presidential elections. On presidential elections, we couldn't possibly do it, so we just shut down school.
I'm wondering, too, if you might get in contact with the Lebanon superintendent and say, we've had a beginning discussion, and, you know, I'm not sure whether we can get up there the 28th, but, you know, whatever, you know, we'd be interested in, like, coordinating action, because, I mean, I think it's just appalling that we have this permissive, you know, law, or, so, and maybe, like, if you might talk to Todd about the polling place, but I think the bigger issue is this, you know, trying to do something about the law itself, if we can. I'm wondering if we could just, I'm just going to propose, because it's 10 o'clock now, if we could just, we have these motions about, you know, three motions, whether we can do those, and then adjourn and meet with Dr. Morse in the next meeting at the end, you know, about his evaluation. He's received his evaluation, he's read it, then he could come back, and rather than to try to talk about that at this time of night. Is that agreeable to people? Okay. So we have a motion to approve the maternity leave from April to the end of the year. Denise?
I'll motion to approve the Moharam maternity leave from Embroil to the end of the year.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Michael. Discussion on this. Hearing that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the motion passes. A motion to approve the high school coach and a volunteer high school robotics mentor. Denise?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and motion to approve the high school spring coach and first robotics mentor.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Questions on this? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that passes. We have a couple policies for second read, right?
Yeah.
These have gone through a lot of work, Kenny?
Unless someone wants to split them, I would move for second read, policy IHCD, advanced coursework, advanced placement courses, as well as policy DG, the school district credit cards, procurement cards.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by, Dan? Discussion on these two? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. I propose we skip the committee updates.
Well, I was just going to mention the policy committee, as far as, as far as the cell phone, and I, you know, know that Michael wanted sort of an update. So obviously, the surveys went out, and the plan, my understanding, is to bring the information back for the March 21st school board meeting, to have a conversation. Am I right about that? Right? We decided the March 21st school board meeting, to have the cell phone survey information presented, so that we could then, at the board level, say, okay, this is, you know, the information we have so far, you know, where are we, where do we want to go from here? Am I right about that?
I wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Just a question, it's been a long time since we made the initial motion to charge the policy committee with action. I remember something along the lines with gathering general information about what other school districts are doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be a part of it as well?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so that can be shared as well. And to Michael's point, we did get information that was more than just the overarching policy, because you're right, that tends to be a very general statement, and so, in fact, we did get, right, but, you know, Todd, you know, got the information in terms of specific school districts, and schools, you can tell how late it is, I'm like so tired right now, specific schools, like middle school, high school, all these different districts.
Kind of the handbook.
Right, right, from the handbook, so that we were able to look at not just the overarching policy, but the specific schools. So we do have all that information that can be shared on March 21st.
Other committee updates? I don't mean to, like I say, I'm kind of rushing, but, public comment? No? Okay, we have a meeting scheduled, and then we have, on the 28th, we have the, 28th of March, we have the homework workshop, okay? So we'll put off the non-public to meet with Dr. Morse till the next meeting. So could I have a motion to adjourn? Al?
Adjourn.
Moved by Al, seconded by Brian, others in favor, we're adjourned.